Evening, everyone. Is there a motion to return the regular board meeting to public session? Dr. Brenner, first. Mr. Mecca, second. Thank you. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Opposed, abstentions? Motion carried unanimously. We call the regular board meeting to order. All board members are present. Mr. Mecca, would you please join us in reciting the pledge to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be advised that in the event of a fire emergency, an alarm will sound. And if an evacuation is necessary, please note all marked emergency access and evacuate well away from the building. At this time as well, we request that everyone please turn their cell phones and other electronic devices to silent. Thank you. Before we begin tonight, I also want to welcome Mr. Nick Filipowski, who is serving tonight for our Director of Communications. Welcome, Nick. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented? Thank you. Dr. McClary, thank you. Second, Mr. LeMay. Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed, abstentions? Motion carried unanimously. Dr. Mertzloff, would you talk to us about board recognition?
Thank you, Mrs. Leatherbarrow. This evening, we would like to recognize Aditi Arun, Philip Belarjon, and Olivia Mancuso, East High School students in grade 11, for receiving a perfect score on their ACT exam. At this time, I would like to invite Mr. Swatman, Principal of East High School, to come forward and tell us more about this truly impressive achievement.
Thank you very much to Dr. Mertzloff and the Board of Education for recognizing our successes at East High School. We have three juniors that have achieved a perfect score on their ACTs, and you've heard all along this year and last year what a rare feat this is. This year's group of three brings East High School's total to 10 perfect ACT scores in the last three years. The accomplishments of a perfect ACT score is impressive, but I'd like you to know how much these students do to add to our building and everything they do outside of that. First, we have Aditi Arun, up here. She's a member of the Italian Club, Science Olympiad. She volunteered at our Curriculum Night. She's a member of Biology Olympiad, and she works her various summer internships, most recently at Hopman Woodard Institute. Thank you. Second, we have Philip Beljaron. He is a member of the Newspaper Club, the Stage Crew, Sources of Strength, the Jazz Band, and he composes music, which is performed at our concerts. So congratulations to Philip as well. And third, we have Olivia Mancuso, who is a member of the Varsity Cheerleading Team, indoor track and field, outdoor track and field where her specialty is the pentathlon. And she's a member of Link Crew. She volunteered at our Curriculum Night, as well as being a member of the co-chairs for our eighth grade orientation. Congratulations, Olivia. Not only, as you see, these are fine students, but they're great citizens as well, and they add so much to our school. So I'm so proud of their accomplishments. Congratulations again. You don't have to speak for her. We're going to go over there. Is that a no? All right, we're going to go over here. Mine over here.
Congratulations. Dr. McClary, would you please read the Board's public expression statement?
Welcome to all who have come to observe this regular board meeting. Per Policy 1510, the Board has set aside 30 minutes for public expression, a time when we invite members of the community to share ideas and concerns with us. We welcome this opportunity to hear from you. Each person is given up to three minutes in which to address the Board. You will be signaled with a yellow flag at half minutes so that you still have time to conclude your remarks. This is a meeting held in public rather than a public meeting, which means we will not be engaging in a dialogue with members of the community this evening. Rest assured, we are listening carefully, and we take seriously what you have to say. We would also like to ask that you demonstrate respect for us and for one another by speaking to the issues, giving us ideas, sharing your opinions, and not engaging in any personal attacks. Thank you for your cooperation. The first person signed to address us is Chelsea Leon.
Good evening, everyone. It's been some time since I've been at the podium. I used to frequent this place several years ago when my daughter Mia was in elementary school, and I commonly had to get up here and talk about food allergies and the safety that was necessary to protect her with regard to food allergies. At that point in time, after really advocating on the issue, we had a lot of changes that took place across the board at all of the different schools in the district, and it really, really moved forward with the amount of safety that we were able to put into place. I didn't think I would be back up here anytime soon, so it has been several years, but I'm up here today to once again address, you know, the issue of safety. Mia is now at Heim Middle School, and with that, she's grown up quite a bit, probably less maintenance with regard to her food allergy and the amount of necessary help that she would need. But on the other hand, what we've experienced recently is that there's days at Heim Middle where there is not a nurse present. Quite often, when there isn't a nurse that they're able to secure, the district will rely on help from the Heim Elementary School, which is across the parking lot. Unfortunately, what ends up happening quite often is if we have an emergency at Heim Middle, the amount of time it would take to get a nurse from Heim Elementary, even though it's across the parking lot, is quite substantial. We recently had an emergency take place at Heim Middle where we didn't have a nurse in place that day. A student had a seizure, and once again, everybody's kind of in scramble mode, trying to figure out how quickly we could get somebody to respond to it. Emergency services had to be called, and also the nurse had to come over from Heim Elementary. That really raises, you know, a red flag in my mind, because years ago, I was up here actually advocating on this very issue. We were able to get to a point where we had secured nurses when there was an absence, and all of a sudden, now we seem to be having a problem again. I've addressed this with various folks, administrators in the district, but it doesn't look like there's been a solution to the problem as of yet. I'm just hoping that everybody can kind of take a harder look at this and find out why this is an issue now, and how we tackled it back then, and if there's new issues that have cropped up since, how we can address them. So thank you very much for your time this evening. My daughter's going to be up here speaking next. I'm pretty proud of her because now she's grown up quite a bit and able to advocate for herself, too. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next person on the list to speak is Maya.
Hi there. My name is Mia Leon, and I have a food allergy. Today, I wanted to share you how I felt about the nurse situation. Having a nurse not come in the school was very dangerous, and with that decision that you made put lots of people at risk of dying. Even if you gave a heads up in advance, there would still be no nurse in the school that would help, but still, there should be one. Even I have a friend at school, and he was nervous that there was no nurse. And if he did have a seizure, there would be no one to protect him from dying. I hope you have realized that having a nurse is crucial in schools and that I was very scared because there was no nurse. I hope in the future, this will never happen again, because that whole thing scared me and lots of other people, too. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Thank you, Maya.
Our next speaker is Kristin Chikowski. Chikati. I'm sorry, I'm not doing well at all this evening.
Hello. I just wanted to come up here and just thank all of you for your conversations and the requests for more information that you guys have been doing surrounding our concern about class size and the class size guidelines. I know we've been coming to the board meetings and hearing you guys asking really great questions, and we know you're doing things behind the scenes, and we really do appreciate it. I believe it was the last board meeting, we presented 72 letters from Williamsville residents that showed concerns over class sizes and class size guidelines, and we just wanted to present another 23 letters to you, and that's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
No one else has signed in to speak at public expression? We do still have a few moments of our allotted time, if there is anyone who is interested in speaking to the Board. Seeing none, we're done with public expression, then.
All right, we'll move on with our agenda. Item six is our District Shared Decision Making Team Report. Dr. Mertzloff?
Thank you again, Mrs. Leatherbarrow. This time, I'll turn it over to Dr. Baylen, who will introduce our guest and share some information about our District Shared Decision Making Report.
Thank you, Dr. Mertzloff. Good evening to everyone. It's an absolute pleasure to be able to introduce really a person who I find difficult to introduce. We actually had this very conversation in the hall. I attempted to introduce one of our parents, Helen Drew Mioski. Helen has been involved with our District Shared Decision Team for quite some time. We truly appreciate her leadership, guidance, and support in assisting us and ensuring that this process is really and truly a collaborative one, including many stakeholders from our school community. So at this time, I would like to invite Helen to address the Board and share the report that she has prepared this evening. Thank you very much, Helen.
Thank you, Dr. Baylen, and thank you so much for that kind introduction. It's a pleasure to work with that group. As you know, I've been doing it for too many years. So once again, it's my annual pleasure to inform the Board that, yes, the Williamsville School District is, again, full compliance with New York State regulations regarding shared decision making. Each year, the district team reviews the plans of each of the buildings, primarily for, essentially for their compliance with the regulations, not so much the content, but of course, in the process of doing so, we do learn about what's going on in the buildings and the stakeholders' commitment to the continued success of our students. And just to give you an idea, a copy of my report is in your folder. I've encouraged you to review online, under the Wits Page tab, all the things that happened under the shared decision making umbrella, everything from a personal journaling event that took place at Heim Elementary with its 65 percent participation over the summer, to the reading program at Country Parkway, to, oh, let's see, I forget here, Heim Middle, I believe, had something where in the neighborhood of 1,500 volunteer hours per grade. That's a phenomenal achievement. And my personal favorite, because my kids have gone and still go to East High School, the fact that a recent survey indicated that every single student surveyed indicated they had a person that they felt they could turn to, a person that would be there for them in the event of a problem. And that's just an amazing thing to think about and an objective I think we should all share. So once again, congratulations to everyone who participated in the process, and thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the biennial review and plan for participation for shared decision making as presented? Dr. McClary? Mr. Borenstein? Is there any discussion? I just want to echo that the list of activities that you are describing is quite impressive. I only clicked on Dodge because that's my liaison school, but it was just really excellent to read all of the activities that are happening in the school. All right? All in favor? Opposed, abstentions? Motion carried unanimously. We will now move on to our consent agenda approval. This will be for items eight, personnel, nine, business, and 10, special needs and student activities. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda items as presented? Mrs. Van Sis, thank you. Mrs. Beeger, second. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Opposed, abstentions? Motion carried unanimously. Our next item is the approval of the minutes. Is there a motion to approve the December 10th regular board meeting minutes? Mr. LeMay, thank you. Second. Mr. Meyer, thank you. Are there any corrections or additions needed to the minutes? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed, abstentions? Thank you. Motion carries eight, zero, one. For our next item, I would like to call in Mr. Borenstein, who has written a resolution that he would like to propose.
Thank you. Each year, the New York State School Board Association recognizes an individual who has demonstrated an extraordinary level of service to children and education in our state. NISBA presents the Everett R. Dyer Award for Distinguished School Board Service to that individual. We have such an individual right here in Williamsville, who has been a member of the Williamsville School Board for 15 years, served as its president, has served on the Erie One Bosse's Board for almost 40 years, served as its president, and if that weren't enough, is a past president of NISBA itself. The first step in placing a name into nomination for this prestigious award is for the Board of Education to approve a resolution to endorse the nomination. Therefore, I make a motion to approve a board resolution endorsing the nomination of Judy Katz for the Edward R. Dyer Award for Distinguished School Board Service.
There's a motion on the table. Is there a second? Dr. McClary, second. I do apologize, I went out of order a little bit, so we're on 12E. I'll go back to A in a moment. Okay, is there any discussion on that motion? Dr. McClary?
Just a comment that I certainly agree wholeheartedly with everything that Mr. Borenstein has said.
Thank you.
All in favor? Opposed, abstentions? Motion carried unanimously. Now moving back to item 12A. The Erie County Association of School Boards, otherwise known as ECASB, held its delegate assembly meeting on Thursday, January 9th. Mr. LeMay attended. Do you wish to give a report at the table?
There's nothing really to discuss. My report summarizes it all. Thank you.
Thank you. The Erie County Association of School Boards Legislative Breakfast will be held this year on Saturday, January 25th. Williamsville Central School District will be hosting this event. It will take place at Williamsville East High School. Registration begins at 8:30, and the program concludes at 11:30. Attending from the Board will be Mrs. Beeger, Mr. Borenstein, Mr. LeMay, Dr. McClary, Mr. Mecca, Mr. Meyer, and Mrs. Van Sis. I apologize that I'm not able to attend. At this time, we are going to take a look at the list of invitees that's in your packet. And is there a motion to approve the attendees listed in the Board Docs, ECASB Legislative Breakfast as presented? Mr. Borenstein, thank you. Second? Mrs. Beeger, thank you. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed, abstentions? Motion carried unanimously. Does anyone have anything else to discuss under ECASB? Thank you. Item D, New York State School Boards Association, will be having its Capitol Conference on February 9th and 10th at the Renaissance Albany Hotel. This event is complimentary for NISBA members. Is there anyone from the Board that's interested in attending this conference that's taking place in Albany? If that changes, please let Mrs. Carey know, and she can register you up till January 29th. All right, we took care of item E. I apologize for going out of order. Item F is our school board visits. On Monday, December 16th, the Board visited North High School and the AIM Building. I'd like to thank Mr. Thomas and his team over at North, as well as Mr. Utz over at AIM, and his wonderful team as well for our very nice visit. Our next visit will be on Friday, January 17th. This is going to be at Forest Elementary. Attending so far, we have Mr. LeMay, Dr. McClary, as listed as a maybe, Mrs. Van Sis, Mr. Borenstein, Mrs. Beeger, and myself. Does anyone wish to further confirm or deny their attendance? Yes?
Unfortunately, that maybe has changed to a no.
Okay.
I also will not be able to.
Okay, thank you. So Mr. -- sorry, Mrs. Van Sis and Dr. McClary are unable to attend.
You know what? That's at 7:30 a.m.
It is.
I can -- put me down as a yes, although I will have to leave at like 8:15.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Meyer. Our next visit is going to be at Maple East, and that's on Tuesday, January 28th. This will be another 7:30 visit. Attending listed as Mr. LeMay, Dr. McClary as a maybe, Mr. Borenstein, and myself. Are any corrections to that?
I'm still a maybe.
Okay. Dr. Venator? Excellent. Please put down Dr. Venator. Thank you. Then we have Heim Middle, which will be Friday, I'm sorry, Monday, February 3rd. This will be an 8 a.m. visit. Listed is Mr. LeMay, Mr. Borenstein, Mrs. Beeger, and myself. Are there any corrections to this? Thank you. Valentine's Day, Friday, February 14th, 8 a.m. at Mill Middle. Attending will be Mr. LeMay, Mrs. Van Sis as a maybe, and myself. Can we get a fourth person? Anybody want to give up Valentine's Day morning? No. Okay. Moving on, review of our retreat. We did hold a board retreat, this is item G on our President's Report. A retreat was held this past Saturday here at District Office. Mrs. Carey did share a summary with you. One of our agenda items, or sorry, one of our agreed actions, I should say, was for us as a Board to make a better effort to come prepared and attend our board meetings. We agreed to read our packets and submit questions prior to Monday mornings. Another action that we agreed upon is to revise our board member code of conduct, and Eric has offered to start this process, and I see that you sent us a document, so thank you, Eric, for doing that. And finally, we also agreed to use our Board Meeting Observation Reflection Tool. It's a reflection tool that's provided by NISBA, and Dr. McClary has started the process simplifying that form, because we thought as a Board that it was a little bit lengthy. So I just want to say thank you to everyone that was able to attend our retreat, and as always, thank you to Mrs. Carey for all of the planning and preparation, and the food was nice, too. So thank you. Item H is our Board Goals Progress Report. So the Board adopted the 2019-2020 Board Goals at the August 13th Board Meeting. The Board reviewed and developed implementation activities to achieve their goals at the September 17th Board Meeting. It was agreed to review our progress at this meeting. This agenda item is in Board Docs, and we will briefly review our progress at this time. So I want to thank Mrs. Carey for putting together this PowerPoint, and also I want to thank Mrs. Van Sis, because her and I worked together to sort of go through Board Docs. It's very nice and searchable now, thanks to Mr. LeMay's work on that, and that when you go to the search box in Board Docs, you can type in just about anything that is one of our goals, and it'll sort of populate any items that are on our agenda that had to do with the goals. So our first goal was regarding fostering and enhancing relationships with the community and improving two-way communication with students, families, and community stakeholders. I'm not going to read through all of our goals. There is a PowerPoint list provided for you at the table, but I just wanted to check with numbers of the Board. Are there any other progress indicators that you can, or any other activities that you would like added to this list of progress? So we're progress monitoring all of our activities that we've done throughout the year. If you're having trouble seeing it, I believe it might be, it's in the packet, perfect. But as you can see, there's a chart that shows all of our visits to our buildings. We have our liaison assignments. If I don't want to go too far ahead. Are there any questions or comments on the first goal? Okay. I'm going the wrong way. Sorry. All right, so our second goal, yep, is student wellness. So our goal was to support physical, mental, and emotional needs of students by providing necessary appropriate resources for wellness programs and initiatives. So you can see, we've got five activities that we've done so far, adoption of code of conduct, a couple other items. Does anyone wish to comment on this goal or anything that we've done as a Board that you can think of that you'd like to add? Right, our next goal was on student achievement. All of our progress that we were able to find is listed there for your reference as well. You can see, we've done quite a bit of work with class size reports, summer school reports, presentations by Dr. Baylen and her team. The presentation from elementary school on reading and writing workshop was a huge asset for us to be able to see of all the work regarding that, and now we are also looking at secondary mathematics as an item of interest. Any questions or comments regarding student achievement? And finally, well, actually not finally. Second last, we have board efficacy. This is an area that we are working on. Our retreat that we held was held on Saturday, I believe, will prove to be very beneficial to our performance. We've listed some of the policy, our progress that we've made. And finally, regarding budget development and fiscal oversight, we are in the midst of our budget season, or beginning our budget season. Does anyone have any questions, comments, or additions to our review of goals, or does anyone want to make a general statement regarding any of our goals? Mr. LeMay?
A minor correction, I think. Under student wellness, you show the adoption of the revised code of conduct on May 28th, 2019. I'm not sure if that is the actual date, but that would fall into the previous Board set of goals. These goals are after July 1st.
So we discussed that, Mrs. Leatherbarrow and I, when we were doing this on Sunday, and we wanted, we recognized that, but much work was just done on the previous code of conduct, and that code of conduct was to be implemented for the 1920 school year. Therefore, we decided to include it in this report, because it still shows the work that we're doing this current year. So that was taken into consideration. And just as a comment, so what we plan on doing with this is we plan on, we just And just as a comment, so what we plan on doing with this is we plan on, we decided to do a Google Doc because everyone loves Google Docs now. So we decided, because it's a working document that we were able to both work on together. And then we will implement this and input it into Super Eval for our board evaluation. And then we can, we'll continue to progress monitor so that we could really have a true reflection, I think for the first time, to see what our board is doing and make sure that we're being held accountable and responsible for all of the action plans, as well as supporting the district goals.
Yep, Mr. Maccar. Thank you, Mrs. Van Slice.
Nice job putting this together, and thank you for your efforts in that respect. I'm, I'm sure it was a lot of fun to spend the time that way, but obviously it's important to do that and to document well our accomplishments. And I think in the time I've been on the board, this is probably the most thorough documentation of our achievements in each goal category. So, thanks a lot. And as I was sitting here, I was thinking it would make a really good segue into the evaluation piece, so I'm glad you brought that up.
Yes, absolutely. So it will, we wanted to get everyone's input before we take the time to input it and copy and paste it into our Super Eval program. But all of our board goals are in Super Eval. Mrs. Van Slice helped me fix them because I jumbled them all up, and it's a new program, so I'm trying to get the hang of it. But we will move all of these, I don't know what we call them, progress monitoring evidence of progress, I should say, over to our Super Eval system. And hopefully that will make our end-of-year board evaluation process run a little bit smoother. Great, thank you. Oh, Mrs. Beaker.
I'm sorry, just to make a quick comment, I want to echo Mr. Maccar's sentiments. Just grateful that you spent the time doing this work. What I really appreciate about it is how it's organized, but also efficient at the same time. So it's nice and concise. It helps us to see really all this work that we're doing organized to the board goals that we set at the beginning of the year. So, well done, and thank you for taking the time to do this work.
Thank you, and I just want to make sure everyone realizes that this should be public content, right?
Yes.
It's available for any of you that want to go back and take a deeper look instead of having to squint your eyes at this PowerPoint. Everything that we are accessing is available to the public in our board doc system, which is linked right from our district website. You just go to our district website, click on About Us, Board of Education, and Board Docs. So you follow that pathway, and it takes you right to board docs. You can easily pull this right up for yourself. Thank you. So our next item is item I, an update regarding 2019-2020 transportation. The reason why this is on the agenda is because I wanted to give Mr. Lemay an opportunity to formally, I suppose, request any information that he'd like, and then we as a board can decide if we agree and want to have that information compiled for us. So go ahead, Mr. Lemay.
Thank you. Last month's meeting was running long, so we felt that it was best to bump it to this month. I just wanted us to take a, a chance to do a customer-friendly overview of our transportation system and/or policies that are in place currently. I know we've, especially in the beginning of the school year, we always get a number of complaints and comments and questions. I'm not, not sure that those complaints have risen or anything over the years. I know for the most part, we get satisfactory results from, from people talking to our transportation services and getting their complaints rectified. But I was, wanted to take a step back and take a look at the transportation in general, since we made some major changes in the last year, and look and ask for a report potentially to look at about four or five different main areas, if it's possible. Some of these would be budgetary, some of these would be policy-wise, to allow us to look at if we need to make modifications to the budget, or if we need to look at policy changes, if they make sense, or, or a combination of the two. So some of the things I was looking for was to start with the customer service aspect of it, to look at a three-year complaint record to see how the last year compares to the previous two or three years, to assure that we did a fairly seamless transition, I believe, over to a third-party company. Other things that I was looking at was to how many exceptions are requested to deviate from the normal transportation policy? Have any been granted? If so, what were the circumstances? I know we've had some requests at the podium, as well as some emails that have come in regarding some requests for these, these sorts of things. How many pickup locations are on major roads that are without an apron? Or other safe zones, for example, not on grass or on curbs that, for the students to safely stand and wait for pickup? How much time would be added to routes if the policy was to be changed from .1 miles to .2 miles? And just as an FYI, the current policy is elementary school students, let me try that again, elementary school students, the pickup policy is in, within one-tenth of a mile. So the question is, is for the rest of the district, if we made that the policy, for middle school and above, the policy is currently two-tenths of a mile. And then of course, along those lines, what would be the cost to implement such a change? And would implementing such a change improve the more dangerous pickup locations that I sort of implied previously without having aprons or grass locations? And that was about it. I know that's lengthy. You all received this in an email, so you can refer back to that from last month.
So, help me to understand a little bit, because I started taking notes and I got lost. You're asking for, what I'm hearing you say is that you would like to see reports on any complaints of service?
Compared to previous two, three years. Not looking for specific complaints, looking to see if we have a increase or if we basically maintain.
Okay, so let me pause on that one. So Dr. Mertsov, can you speak to that?
Yeah, we don't track that from year to year in the Transportation Department. Say like in 2012, 2013, we had 42 complaints in the first month of the school year versus the next year. We only had 31, or whatever the numbers might be. We, that's not something we track.
Do we have any indicators at all? I mean, we have no idea to compare this year versus last year or the year previous?
Anecdotal.
Wouldn't, wouldn't we have a record of the complaints? Or do we dispose of the record once we get, I mean, what happens with the record of a complaint that we receive?
Well, I think you're using the term complaint, and you have to keep in mind that sometimes it's not a complaint. Sometimes it's someone looking for clarification. Sometimes it's someone looking for, you know, what would be a better bus stop. Sometimes it's a policy question. Could be a number of things, so.
Would it be possible to com- compose a list of, I don't know, just the contacts that we've received in relation to our transportation from year to year? I mean, pull up whatever comments you've received from 2018, and then whatever comments you received in 2019, just put them on a list?
I don't think they're on any record or on any list, but Mr. Matorski, feel free to correct me if I'm wrong.
No, Dr. Mertsov, you're correct. What we do in transportation is we respond to all the complaints, and we have an internal process to try and call the parent back within that day. When they call, they elevate the response, I do the same thing. We don't have a record of the complaints. I can tell you though, there has been no change in our department when it comes to responding to complaints from last year to this year. It's the same people. So although the transportation is now 100% to STA, there's been no change in the office staff, and we are the major contact for all parents.
So maybe, and I'm just thinking out loud here, but maybe going forward, we should start recording that type of stuff and creating, you know, a database of complaints that we receive in relation to, because I think Sean raises an interesting question. And it would be, I think for me particularly, I know I was very interested in this issue when we voted on it, to see year after year what the customer service feedback is in relation to transportation. And now, I know sitting here on the board, I have a limited window into, you know, all the realities of transportation. But I will say that in my three years on the board, I don't recall hearing as many complaints about transportation as I have this year. And some of them I found pretty concerning. I think one complaint by one mother who came in here at least twice was basically about her son, maybe it was her daughter, but who has no safe place to stand when she's, when she or he was waiting for the bus. And I'd also like to see as part of a report, or maybe even a presentation, where that particular item stands. Because I don't know personally where that one went, but.
I can update you on right now. They still have the same bus stop that they had then.
So there's no been, there hasn't been any resolution to her, the issue as she sees it?
So the part of the issue that I understood was that we have to look at what our transportation policy says as a board. And if we wish as a board to make changes to that policy, that is under our authority to do that. It's also my recollection that Dr. Mertsov, and two times I can think of, asked us as board members here at the table, what specific changes might we want to consider for a transportation policy change?
If you're looking to make changes in regards to a policy, we can do that. There's implications for doing that. More bus runs, more costs, things like that. I'm happy to do that. But I'm not going to go out on a limb and do it for one family and not do it for another family, and so on and so forth, because that's not fair and evenly applied.
I hear what you're saying, Scott, and I hear what Teresa's saying. And I think that the kind of information that Sean is looking for will help direct the board in whichever direction it wants to go, whether we think a change needs to be made or not. I mean, that's material information that's going to inform you on the subject, so.
That's, that's what the rest of the points are in this, are basically to, to get background as to how, how, and what the cost, the repercussions are if we were to make some of these changes that have been suggested at previous board meetings and that sort of thing. Is to put some data behind this to see, okay, does, is it, if we change, say, the global policy from .2 to .1 miles, one-tenth of a mile, what's the budget impact of that? If we don't change that, how many of our stops are major or, you know, potentially major hazard areas that we should maybe address moving those or, or something along those lines?
We can provide that for you, what the cost would be. What we most likely won't be able to provide for the board is how many people are making these types of raising this as an issue for their family, for their child. So it would be difficult for the board to say, this is really a heavy issue in our community, or a light issue, or anywhere in between. But it won't be difficult to say, hey, if we change this in this way, this would be what the result would be in terms of bus service.
Yeah, I understand that, and that kind of goes along with Mr. Meyer's idea that maybe we should start putting a database together and tracking these so that we do have that sort of data. But I understand right now that that data doesn't exist, so that's okay. At, at least on the cost perspective point of this, you know, what's going to be the implication if we were to make some of these changes proposed? Or if we make, you know, move some of the, the pickup stops to more safer areas? How many of those types of areas are we concerned with?
We need to be careful at the table. I just share with everybody, and I'm not trying to be critical, but using the terms like dangerous and safer, when you're talking about district operations, I, I just would caution us about using those types of terms.
I actually have a question real quick about the difference in, Mr. Matorski, I know you've been in your position for a while, so you might know the historical part of it. We have the one-tenth of a mile cut for elementary, but then the two-tenths for middle and high school. Is there any rationale for why it's different, other than the kids are younger?
Believe it or not, that goes back well before I started here.
Okay.
That's about 30-plus years old.
Okay. It's just, it's interesting. One-tenth is a very short amount of distance. I happen to live right near the Heim, the Heim campus. And I'm amazed that a bus even comes out to our house, because I tell my kid all the time, you can throw a rock and hit the school, you know? So there, I, I, I wouldn't be opposed to looking at the cost of, exploring the cost of what it would be if we were to change the mileage from the school. But it's also my understanding that a majority of our busing is refunded from the state. Is that true, or do I have that wrong?
Correct.
We do get aid on our busing per the New York State Transportation Aid Formulas. A big piece of that is what we have to do every three years called the non-pupil decimal. And essentially, without getting into all the details, that is a calculation we do on what is called aidable bus mileage per route. And that is the, a complex formula done, we follow the state formulas, and that is the ratio which kind of impacts that .1, .2.
Okay. Mr. Maccar, sorry.
No problem. I, I support Sean's data request in general. I think there are two issues that you're hitting upon in your data request. And I think the first issue is, is the performance of the busing company now the same as it was before, or worse, or, or better? And while that data is not collected in the office now, and I don't think we should ask them to collect that data, that's just my own opinion, even though it's been suggested. I, I wonder if we could survey the people in the office, or Mr. Matorski, and say, you know, what do you think? Are we getting more, more complaints, fewer complaints, or same amount of complaints as before? And I think that that will yield us the same richness of data. People have an idea if they're getting more complaints about the busing service or not compared to prior years. With respect to the issue of trying to adjust policies, I'm in favor of exploring the costs and finding out the information that would be necessary to, to see if we want to make changes to our policies.
So I'm hearing two separate areas. Do you feel that that's portraying it correctly, Mr. Lanes?
I think it's a good summary. I mean, I can resend this email again, so everybody has a copy of it again. Basically what I just read, read most of this verbatim here into the record tonight, so.
Okay.
So, Sean, just for clarification, are you looking for a order like a presentation?
Mr. Meyer, I just want to remind you that we do follow Robert's rules of order, so I will please.
We haven't been following them, but, okay.
If we decide to take a look first at the complaint issues, like, I, I almost feel like we need to make, you need to make this like a formal motion that we vote on, because I worry about us overstepping as board members. I haven't seen tons of people coming to our podium. I know we had a few people come at our community forum and speak. But it's my understanding that we also had Dr. Mertsov follow up on those issues and give us the information through email that we have requested. So I just want to make sure that we're being mindful as a board when we're requesting information. Because when we make a request for information, we're taking resources. So somebody is being assigned to do that work, and that's manpower, money, and time. And that might take that person, individual away from a duty that they're assigned to that is essential to the running of our day-to-day business. So I'm all in favor of reports when we agree to them, when we agree we need them. But I think we have to have a board majority of us be in agreement. Mr. Borenstein?
Thank you. Yeah, this is an important issue, and we were all affected by that young mother who was deeply concerned about the safety of her child at a bus stop. I guess my own perspective is that I'll support whatever the majority thinks. But it comes down to a single question that I'd like to ask of, of Mr. Matorski is, are there any outstanding concerns or issues that you're aware of in this area?
We've addressed all the concerns that we've received with a response per board policy.
Sure. So that speaks volumes as far as I'm concerned as to how this is being handled at the district level. Thank you.
Alright, so back to a request for information. Did you want to make a formal motion, or do you want to just resend your email, Sean, and have us come back and talk about it? Because I do feel like we need to put some, we kind of have to clean this up and make something official if we're going to do something.
Well, I would make a motion to request information as presented.
The information isn't presented though, like for us to see, so there, there's nothing presented.
I presented to the public record already. I read it in a record.
But you're, you know, right.
So are you putting them together in one item?
I am requesting the two, if we want to split them apart, I, I don't mind. It's, it's a transportation report. And, you know, as, as our duty as trustees to look at costs and balances and evaluate policies, just about everything I asked for in this transportation report addresses all of those. That's how I feel. I don't frivolously ask for reports or, or things from the district to take away from their time. So I'm asking for one detailed report so that we can make a decision whether regards to if we need to update our policy, and if we do, what that cost implication is going to be.
I make a motion for a report.
He made the motion already. He made the motion, you seconded it.
Well, you stopped him mid-motion. You said he couldn't make a motion because he didn't have anything in front of him. So I'm just revising his motion.
Alright.
For a former motion.
He was, yeah, he was.
Sean, if you would like to motion, go ahead and make your motion, please.
I would like to make a motion, please, for the district to research and provide a report based on the information I presented here earlier this evening on basically looking at exceptions to requested deviations, pickup locations, current policies being point one to point two miles and what the cost of locations were to be changing that, and any pickup stops that are not as ideal as we would like them to be from a safety concern point of view.
Can you second that?
I second the motion.
There's the motion on the table. It's been made by Mr. Lemay, it's been seconded by Mr. Meyer. Is there any additional discussion on that motion? Dr. McClary?
Just a clarification. You had offered you will resend us that email.
Do it as we speak, right this moment.
That's fine, thank you.
All right, all in favor on the motion made by Mr. Lemay? Two, three, four, five. Opposed? Okay, abstentions? Okay, motion passes. There was four, right? Five, five, okay. Motion passes, five, three, thank you. Did I do my math? All right. Our strategic planning committee update. The upcoming strategic planning meeting will be held on Wednesday, January 22nd. Dr. Mertzoff, did you want to add anything to that?
I don't think so, not at this time. We did have one of our consultants in this week who visited two of our schools, the last two schools, so they have visited all thirteen schools and talked to focus groups of parents, other focus groups of staff members, and also focus groups of students. So we're looking forward to them coming back next week and getting moving on the beginning of the formulation of some strategic intents and goals.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions or comments on that? All right, moving on to our superintendent's report. Dr. Mertzoff, would you please give your community update?
Sure, thank you, Mrs. Leatherbarrow. I'd like to start off my community update and say thank you to all those people that were at North High School recently when a basketball official had a medical emergency and a very serious medical emergency requiring the use of a defibrillator and other interventions to keep him alive and get him to the hospital. It was a very serious situation, but we're so thankful for the work of our administrators, our teachers, staff members, certainly all of our students and student athletes, and then our parents and community members who were at the game. Several of them have had a medical background that helped save this gentleman's life. So I'd like to thank and recognize everyone who was at North High School who took part in that. That was a very serious situation. In terms of the remainder of my community update, that is all the information I have for now, so I'll conclude.
Thank you, Dr. Mertzoff. We will now take a look at the first reading of policy sixty-two eleven, registration and professional development, and revised policies sixty-one twenty-one, sexual harassment in the workplace, and seventy-one thirty-four, student attendance areas. Would someone like to make them, would someone like to move the first reading of the following new and revised policies? Sixty-two eleven, sixty-one twenty-one, and seventy-one thirty-four. Mr. Lemay, thank you, is there a second? Mr. Meyer, thank you. Is there any discussion? Okay, seeing none, all in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Would someone like to move to table the motion for a second reading and adoption of those policies at the February eleventh regular board meeting? Mr. Lemay, thank you. Second, Mrs. Van Sis. Is there any discussion? Oops, sorry, I'm jumping the book on. All in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carried unanimously, but Mr. Meyer left the table for the vote. Review hiring guidelines and changes of extracurriculars. Dr. Mertzoff, would you like to review this with us?
Yes, at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. McKenna, who's going to share some information in his report. I think he's brought in some of our union leadership and other folks from the district to help share some information. A great deal of work and collaboration went into creating all of this, so he's going to explain more of that to you this evening.
Yep, we'll head to the podium and move our presentation from there. Let's make sure we got this on and ready here. All right, thank you very, very much. We appreciate the opportunity to come here tonight and to present some of the projects that we've had the opportunity to work on in the HR department. We're very proud of the projects we'll be sharing with you tonight because they were true collaborative efforts. There really was a lot of folks who came together to work on these projects. Not everybody could be here tonight, but we were able to get some of the people here tonight to help share in the presentation. Tonight, we will be presenting on three of the programs that we've been working on. The three tonight are the WTA Hiring Guide, which was guidelines and all the specs for hiring teachers and all the instructional staff. We also developed a new guide for the WA, the Williamsville Administrators Association, for our administrative group. And we have another program for you tonight, the Extracurricular Program, which we really developed a whole new program which is completely different from the way we did extracurriculars in the past. So tonight, you're going to be seeing three major updates that we're glad we're able to give to you tonight because they're positive, they're collaborative, and we really believe strongly that this makes our district a much better place and certainly a much more consistent place for all of us to operate from. All of these were collaborative team efforts, and I really give a lot of thanks to everyone on the committees, but especially all the leadership from the WTA and the WA and Central Office as well. Everyone chipped in. Not all could be here tonight, but in the first presentation, which we are going to go over the hiring guides, helping me tonight will be Molly Cooper, Dr. Marie Balin, Charlie Smilnic, Michelle Light, and Keith Wing, who is here with us tonight. Why were these important to do, these projects? The WTA Guide was really important because there was incredible inconsistencies that were happening in the hiring practices and procedures. When we reached into this and did some research on why we were getting different documents that were coming to us, and there seemed to be different protocols from different schools, we found out there was different protocols and forms and procedures from different schools, and there was good reason for it. There were two documents that were existing at the same time, one that was developed in the early 2000s and another one that was developed around 2010. Different schools had gotten these different documents and were using different platforms. With these different documents were different procedures, there were different forms that were with these, that came along with them. So we were seeing in HR a lot of inconsistencies that were coming forward to us. So it was important that we made this crooked road straight and got everybody on the same Also, through the negotiation process, it was very clear from the WTA and all of us at Central Office that it needed to be looked at as well. So we put it right into the contractual language that this needed to be looked into. Revisions and guidelines of forms were necessary because they were different forms. When we were getting different forms from the committees, it was concerning to us because there should be different, it looks like some of them were almost made up, you know what I mean? You could tell that, not that they didn't do a bad job, but some of the schools had created their own ways of doing business. So it was important that we straightened that out and get everybody using the same forms. Stakeholders expressed needs for revisions. Once we got a chance to get out and talk to people from the different schools, it was very clear that people said, yeah, this is a problem, and we'd like to get this straightened out, and we're willing to work with you to get this straightened out. So we found collaboration pretty easy with this. Folks wanted to get involved, and it was pretty exciting. Once we got everybody at the table, we were really on the same page, and we were able to move forward pretty effectively and efficiently. And another reason why is to mitigate legal issues and liability. When you don't have constant procedures and everyone's operating from different places, it opens you up to litigation. So it was important that we get everybody on the same page to make sure that someone who's hired, for example, at Forest does the same procedures if they were hired at East High School. It is important that all people are hired using the same processes, the same reference checking procedures, the same forms being used. So this is, these are some of the major reasons why putting the WTA Guide together again and getting everybody on the same page was very important. Committee members, and there were some other folks that, these are the main committee members, but I'd say there's ad hoc committee members along the way that, you know, that weighed in. Marie Balin, Keith Boardman, Anna Ciari, Mike Calandra, Molly Cooper, Michelle Light, me, Chuck Miller, Joe Prey, who's here tonight too. Joe, we appreciate you coming out and supporting us tonight. Tony Scanzuzzo, Charlie Smilnic, and Keith Wing. So we had an excellent group, a lot of experience on this group, and they were actually, it was good to work with, a lot of excellent dialogue, a lot of discussion, a lot of pros, a lot of cons, and there was a lot of collaboration. And at the end of the day, the product that we came up with was, I think, a high-quality product with, had a lot of eyes, a lot of hands, and a lot of people working on it. But what, I'm going to task Michelle Light to come up and talk a little bit about what was revised and updated in the Hiring Guide.
Do I get to click? Cool. Awesome. All right, so our goal was to put all the documents in one place rather than having people to look in various locations for information. So we started with the contract language, then we did an FAQ, and then we did updated interview forms for everyone. So the first part of the FAQ was really what qualifies as a vacancy. That was an area that we had some discussions around because somebody leaving mid-year causes a lot of questions, as does a position that might have changed or moved to another building and those types of things. And then who could apply for it, who's entitled to an interview, and how we fill some of the positions that we don't have the same regulations for, like our part-time and our transfer positions. We also have contractual language that guarantees our teaching assistance to interviews for positions, and so we had to talk about that and how that works out and plays in the real world. Displaced WTA members is a very frequent topic of conversation in the spring. This happens when, because of class size changes or enrollment changes, there are fewer positions in the building than there are fewer positions in the building than there are people. And so then we have to have the really tough conversation of who has to go to another building and how is that handled? We wanted to prevent a situation where that teacher who may have been in the district for three or four years and built bonds in that school already feels upset that they're leaving that school, and we didn't want to make it any more difficult for them to get reassigned to another building. So we dealt with that. We also dealt with members who returned from childcare leave and how they're handled. So all of those are addressed in our FAQ. And Keith's up next.
So a tremendous amount of work went into this next slide, a lot of great conversation that we had, but we took a look at the hiring committees themselves, the composition of the committee, who would be a part of it. We talked about the required training that we have for committee members and people who need to get retrained every three years in order to be able to serve on one of these committees, even things such as when the committees would be able to convene to conduct interviews after the posting process has concluded. Had a lot of conversation about the candidates themselves, the certifications that they would have to have, which is a tricky issue because, for example, special education is an area where we used to have a K-12 special education certification, used to be when I graduated, you know, the prominent thing to have, and now it's broken into two different segments, a K-six and a seven-twelve. Elementary used to be K-six, and now it's K-two and one through six, two different certifications. So we had to really take a look at all those issues and find out what was best for Williamsville and experience as well. We talked a lot about the process, including a demonstration lesson as being best practice at the tail end of the interview process. And lastly, we took a look at how this impacted individuals who have been placed on our preferred
Additionally, we updated the interview form for the WTA members. What we did is we consolidated the current, or the previously existing form to try to make it more relevant because there's items on the Hiring Guide Hiring Form using a Liker scale of one to four, with one being the highest, four being the lowest. We kept that part of the Liker scale consistent and kept it the same. However, we did consolidate the areas. As you can see, there's five areas now that we're really focusing on with a narrative section on the back of some of the other areas we do like to see in our future hires or potential hires. Now we are going to transition to the Williamsville Administrators Association members and how we hire them now. We switched over, and there was a need for it because we never had a guidance document or anything telling us how to hire any kind of administrator. Sometimes we'd have twenty-five in a committee, twenty-five people with, let's say, for example, twenty teachers, one administrator, and one custodian. Well, it was very interesting. Another building may have eighteen, one may have twenty-five, one may have sixteen, one may have four. There was never anything really that was consistent across the board of members across five different unis being represented when we're hiring somebody that's going to make a difference in a building. So we needed a process to keep it consistent, so that's what we did for both principals and assistant principals. We now have a two-part process that will be talked about coming up. So now every stakeholder in the district now does have a say when we're hiring an administrator in the district.
On the screen, we'd like to introduce you to the members who were involved in developing those resources. Very similar to what you saw on the list for the WTA Hiring Guide, we had representatives from the WAA. In addition to ourselves at the district level, we also had a few assistant principals joining. So you see Mike Antonelli and Tricia DeSantis, to name a few. So what were the items that were necessary to include in the document that was newly created? We wanted to share with you some of these critical components. First and foremost, we had to speak to what the process was for the posting of positions. How were we notifying staff? How were the committee members selected? As you just heard from Mr. Smilnic, there was variation in not just the number, but there was also variation in how they were approached and how that process looked from a composition perspective and a process perspective. What did the training look like? We have a pretty involved and comprehensive process on the teacher's side and on the instructional side for question preparation and interviews. The same had to really hold true here. What did that look like? So that was conceptualized and reflected in this particular guide. What did the administrative review for the selection of candidates consist of? And this happens across many different levels because, as you may also be aware, the leadership team is also involved in the process for hiring administrators. What did the interview process itself look like for both the assistant principal and principal levels? And then again, that had to be articulated and codified in this particular document. And last but not least, what did the recommendation process look like? You want consistency across all of these processes and procedures, as we already shared, to ensure that that is something across our buildings, across our district, that's done in a very both comprehensive but consistent manner across the board. And last but not least, just as was done with the WTA Hiring Guide, processes and procedures would also follow is looking at forms and how do we document all of this in a manner that is both comprehensive and, again, consistent. So that was undertaken as part of the process as well.
So what does the interview process look like for hiring new administrators? Starting with principal, this process is a very rigorous process that was really looked at to increase the number of stakeholders that participate and also the diversity of those stakeholders on each committee that is going to be conducting interviews. So beginning with principals, principals actually start at level one before two separate teams. And these teams or committees are structured with a recommended structure that we target to make sure that that diversity exists. So the first team is led by Dr. McKenna, and that's the instructional team listed first. The target structure for instructional team has three WA members, so that's our administrators, as well as targeting two coordinators or instructional specialists and up to seven WTA members. So we also try to target some diversity within each group. So for example, up to seven of the teacher group, we can look at different grade levels, and we can look at different subject areas or specialties. So for the second team, we all So for the second team, we also have CSDA members, so we have grounds, we have facilities, child nutrition. And we also look at our WARP members, who are secretary, aide, it could be anybody within that membership group. So we also target a computer support specialist and a supervisor in that group, as well as community input. The community input could be students, if it's age appropriate, but it's also certainly the PTA and the community members. So at that point, each team recommends candidates to go forward as finalists. And I can tell you, we've had so much success with that. We've had all of our members surveyed who participated. They have 100% said that they felt they had an active and a valued voice. And I can tell you that we've had unanimous support to recommend candidates to the leadership team. So that was a lot of success for that process as we piloted it two times now. At Level 2, the leadership team interviews and reference checks, so it's certainly a very thorough process as well. For assistant principals, certainly very vigorous as well, but it's a little bit streamlined. So the committee is a one-time committee at Level 1. And that is also designed with a recommended configuration to target that diversity with up to six instructional WTA members, up to four non-instructional staff, so that would be your CSDA, WARP, and computer specialists, and targeting two WAA members for that as well. That's our administrators. And two WCA members, that is instructional specialists or coordinators. So that team also makes recommendations to leadership. Leadership follows up with their finalist interviews and also with reference checking to make sure that the candidate has prior success. Again, very successful with this new diverse team, and my take on that is members feel that they have been very valued in their input. So it's been a great process. And I think Dr. McKenna, at this point, is going to wrap up this presentation for you.
I am here. Where is it? Do we, the interview form for the WA members, first of all, we had no form before. So creating a form was something that was necessary. We looked at the form that was used for the teachers and we used that as a template. Before, in the interview process, they were actually using the forms for the teachers in, through the administrative process. It was really inappropriate and sort of, many of the things that were on the form were irrelevant. So it was really important that we developed new forms. And some of the things, of course, that we focused on was leadership ability and knowledge of curriculum instruction assessment. We took those from Marzano's 21 Responsibilities, if people who, I know some folks are familiar with Marzano's work. So what we did is we used that as a template when we started to design this particular form. And we've gotten good results. Again, it's appropriate, yields us good information, so then we can make better decisions. And then the last slide is really, we surveyed along the way too. Where are we here? Did I go the wrong way? Oh, there it is. The survey results, what we did along the way was each time we did the interview process last year, we developed a survey and we gave it to all of the participants. We got 61 participants that returned their survey. And as Molly mentioned, it was very, very positive input we got back. And one of the most important things that I thought was, was question one, was do you feel you had a relevant voice in the process? It was really just a yes or no question. And the reason that we asked that question was because the previous year, when we had went through some of the process, some of the feedback we'd got was that people felt they did not have a relevant voice in the process. And that came through to us pretty loud and clear. So that's why we looked at this and tried to evaluate the feedback we got and tried to change the process to, you know, yield better results. And we did. All 61 of the respondents said yes to that. So we felt that was a really good indication right off the bat that we had created something that people felt good about. And also, when we, even with the dual committees with the principalship, which some folks had some trepidation at the beginning, because they wondered, well, what if we get different people and is this going to be, you know, a problem? Well, we, they, both the committees yielded the same people, which was really great. And one of the things that we found out about that was, if you do the background work ahead of time, part of the things that we always do is we meet with everybody beforehand. And when we do question development, we do training and question development. But a big part of that is really sitting down with the committees and just asking them, what do you want to see in an administrator? And we spend a lengthy amount of time having dialogue and discussion with these groups about what it is they want to see. And then we could get everybody to this place where they're really starting to agree about, yeah, these are the things that we feel are a good match and a good fit for our building. So the good thing is, is that the process has worked well thus far. And it's yielded very, very good results. And we're going to continue to monitor it. You know, each time we have a committee, you know, we debrief afterwards. We'll still give out surveys afterwards, see how people are feeling. But we're happy with what we've done. We think it's made improvements. We know it's brought a lot more consistency to the process, and we're going to continue to keep looking at it. Currently, right now, we have AP positions open at Transit and at Mills, so we're using this process as we speak. Next week, we'll be bringing in new candidates for interviews for these positions. And this is the process that we have used throughout this year as well. So that's it for these particular initiatives. Any questions? I know we're going to go on to extracurriculars in just a minute, but I don't know if there's any questions about what we've presented so far. Yes, Eric?
I comment, really. Thanks to you and the entire team for this initiative. As many of you know, because you sit on the Strategic Planning Committee with some of us up here, this was identified as a major issue early on in the process, consistency across the district. So take that initiative and start to bring some consistency to our hiring practices as a major step forward. So thank you, thanks to you as well.
Thank you. I say, they're a great team to work with.
Yep.
Yep, Mary?
Just a comment as well. A few years ago, we'd heard some questions and concerns around hiring processes and consistency. I love the rationale in which you started to really identify those questions and issues that you could improve. And I remember seeing this as an HR goal for the district, which I thought was a great focus, and just to see where it's grown from there. I think it's fantastic that this work had diverse participations. You have teachers and administrators people working together. That's excellent, because you're covering those different avenues of what concerns people might have. And the structure of the team, the specificity that you have there, so that there's not wiggle room or questions of what it's supposed to look like, and then to survey afterwards, it really looks like it's successful. And from a board point of view and overseeing this process, it's so nice to see all the work that's been done here. Really impressive presentation. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you. Suzanne?
First off, yes, we totally appreciate your efforts. I know when I first joined the board, this was a, this was the first issue we walked onto. And we have given Dr. Martsoff a ton of questions about hiring. So to see that there is now an established process, even the dual committees, we often and will continue to question Dr. Martsoff. And I will tell you, as a board member, I feel so much more confident. It validates when we are to, you know, when we are to approve a recommendation, it just validates the entire process with it. And we have the confidence now, knowing the district and the staff has really gone through a thorough process and followed that, and there's established guidelines. So we do really appreciate all of your efforts. It's very, very advantageous for the, advantageous for the entire district. But just a question, how do you decide? Is it the same people sitting on the interview committee? How do you decide which individuals, such as WTA members, to invite?
For like the principalship?
Yes, for like the principalship.
What I'll do is I will send out an invitation
Okay.
to the staff and to see who puts in. Now, it's very, that varies from school to school as well, because sometimes I might get 30 people that might put in. Sometimes we've had to go out and kind of prod more people to get involved. So it all depends on the school and the situation. But after they submit their names, what we'll do is I'll get together with usually the, you know, administration leadership team, and what we'll do is we'll try to go through, let's say, for example, these, right now, the assistant principal positions. Of course, I'll collaborate with the building principal with that, because, and one of the things that we look at is we try to get as much representation from different departments as much as possible. So that's one of the criteria that we use. We also try to look at people who are on past committees, because we try to make sure that we spread it out, so that, you know what I mean? It all, it all depends on the situation as well. Now, with the Transit situation, for example, right now, this is the third time that they've gone through that. There are some people who've been on that for three times and they wanted to be on it. And I honored that with them, because they really, there's some people who want to see this through to the end. And, you know, speaking with Dr. Wall and we worked together on that, there are some people who've been on that committee for, you know, for a while, because of, you know, I guess, seeing it through to the end. But each time that we get together, we really do try to make a, look at who puts in, and we try to do the best we can to get as much participation as possible. And we do try to look at all the different committees and to try to get different grade levels and special areas, as many people as we can involved.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Teresa?
So I won't repeat all of the thank yous, but I agree with all of them. My question is, because you just spoke about the Transit middle issue, when we have this sort of like ground, the movie Groundhog Day, you know, where like we're starting over again. I'm trying to think how to word this. How many people are you sending up? Like, how many candidates are you sending up to like, to Level 1? Or maybe a better question is more like, can you talk a little bit more about what criteria you're using to decide who gets chosen to come for an interview? Because I, you know, it makes me wonder, is it just that there's nobody left out there that is good enough for Williamsville? Or, you know, like, what is the issue? I do realize that nationwide, finding educators and administrators is going to increasingly become a problem. If you look at any of our publications coming from NICE-IT or American Federation of Teachers or any of them. So just to speak a little bit about that.
Are you specifically talking about the administrative positions right now, or?
Administrative positions only, yes.
Yeah, because I think we really, that's where we've had, we've had to go back to the drawing board, not so much, I think, teachers, except for probably Mandarin, where we had, we had to keep going back. But I think with the, with the principalship, first of all, I think that we do have very high standards here in Williamsville, and it's hard to get through that interview process, I will tell you that. The selection process is not easy either. What we do is we, we have the leadership team look at all of the candidates. We all look at them independently. So there'll be myself, Dr. Martsoff, Dr. Baylen, Mr. Maturzky, Mr. Scanzuzzo, and if it's an assistant principal, the principal will look at it as well. What we do is we each look at them ourselves, and then what we decide is looking at their, at their criteria, and we'll brainstorm at leadership, you know, some of the attributes and things that we're looking for from, from our perspective. But at the same time, we think it's important that everybody has their own kind of lens too. You know, Tom's lens, from a business perspective, is important. Tony's lens, from special education, is important. Marie's lens is important. So when we look at all of them, a lot of times, we will look and get different candidates. Like, the pool that I might pick out might be different than what Tony picks out, might be different than what Scott picks out. So even though we try to get some basic principles that we're looking for, we do come from different kind of worlds that yield different people. So what we do is we go through that process. And then, once we put all of our candidates who we think are the ones we'd like to bring back in, I put them on a grid. And then there's, we see the crossover. And usually, we'll make a criteria to say, yeah, you have to have so many votes. So usually, you might have to have at least three votes from the leadership team to move on. So there's been times too, where if we're on a bubble, we'll all review them, we'll make sure if it's somebody that we're comfortable with, we'll move them on. But it's something where it really has to have, really, an approval from all of us on the leadership team. So it's a pretty interesting process. And if somebody feels really strongly about a candidate, they'll say, would you please all look at this one again? Can we review these ones again? And if the committee feels that, you know, we look at their criteria and someone can make a good case that somebody is, you know, a good candidate, I can't think of a time yet that we haven't added somebody that somebody's wanted to get on the list. So that's how we do it. It really is, we meet it, we do it independently, we put them all together, and then we get our candidates from there.
Thank you.
It's an interesting process. It's actually yields some pretty, I think, some real high-quality candidates.
I appreciate your attention, Dela. Thank you.
No, thank you. These are things that we talked about. These are like, I'm glad that you asked some of those nitty-gritty questions, because those are some of the questions that we asked ourselves going through this process too. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Any other questions? Sean?
One, I repeat with the sentiment of my colleagues here, I mean, excellent work, and we're very thrilled to see this. I want to specifically highlight the, kind of, the 360 feedback. We're going to be looking and doing surveys on these committees afterwards. While I think you guys have probably done everything in your possible to foresee the future and as to, you know, the dilemmas and problems of what could come, putting it into place and actually implementing it, and then coming back around and looking at the feedback afterwards and considering future improvements is excellent. Is there a need, kind of generically, that we deploy something like this on all of our hiring practices within the district? Do we have a universal hiring standard across, say, hiring teachers and assistants and that sort of stuff? Or is it mostly left up to the buildings and that sort of thing?
I think that this guide goes to all buildings, and it's, this is a universal, consistent guide that goes across all 13 buildings.
Yeah, I'm referencing, though, like, when it comes to, say, hiring teachers. Do we have a formal plan for doing that? If we need office assistants, if we need administrator, well, not administrators, this is the plan, but that sort of thing, you know, custodial staff. Do we have a formal plan? Is this something that we're going to start with this and then potentially modify and roll out to them? Or we're happy with the current plan that's in place that the buildings use?
Well, we can always look at it. I mean, we've done this now with the teachers, and we've done it with the administrators. We have a plan in place already with the custodial staff, but we're open to always looking at it as well. We can definitely bring it back to leadership team to see if it's something that's, needs to go to other areas. We're certainly willing to look at that. But we do have, we do have procedures in place right now. It hasn't come to our attention that those other areas were some issues. These came to our attention, we got feedback that there was problems and issues. We haven't heard that those other areas have those same issues or problems, but doesn't mean that we shouldn't look at them, and doesn't mean that there are problems that need to be looked at. Great, thank you.
Dr. McKenna, thank you for your leadership on this. I know it was a lot of work and a great deal of collaboration, and I want to say thank you to you and the entire team for putting this together and coming up with ideas and agreements that make sense for the entire district. So, nice job by everyone.
Thank you, Dr. Thanks to the team. They really were fantastic to work with. We have another one, though, too. We're not done. So we got more for you. We've got more coming your way.
We're ready.
That's great.
Yeah. This is good news. This is the good stuff, because these really are good projects that we really feel really good about, because it really was a whole bunch of people came together, we came around a problem, we triaged around the problem, and we made solutions for these problems. And solutions that we believe have made a positive difference. The next one is the Extracurricular Committee. So if you could put that one up now, Deb, we'll take a look at this. Now, representatives from this committee who are here tonight are Keith Boardman, Lexus Langhier, Jeff Czekluski, Molly Cooper, again, from HR, Dr. Baylen, again, helped us out on this, and so did Joe Prey. And I will say that Mr. Scanzuzzo did as well, too. He's just now with the presentation, he's been busy with a lot of other things lately, so we kept, we let him have a break with these presentations tonight. But the Extracurricular Committee, and the presentation you're going to see tonight really focuses on middle school and high school, because that's really what the contract addresses. And if you look at the contract with, where the extracurriculars are and the payments were, it really is a middle school, high school contractual issue. Not to say we didn't look at it at an elementary level as well. We did bring elementary in, we had some conversations with them. What we did with the elementaries, even though it's not, it wasn't part of the contract or the issue, we did make sure that we streamlined the process, and we did make sure we updated all their forms, so that they were all using the same forms when they were adopting new clubs or evaluating clubs. So we wanted to make sure that there was a process at the elementary school that was consistent among all of the buildings. So even though it really wasn't part of the charge, that's, that's something that came up, and we did address along the way, but it's not really part of this presentation, because it really wasn't the contractual charge that we had. So one of the things, too, with the contract, the last contract said, the district and the WTA agreed to do a joint committee to look at this issue. And the reason that they, we wanted to, we had to look And the reason that they, we wanted to, we had to look at this issue is because, again, of inconsistencies. And I know Mr. Boardman and some of the group are going to talk about this in just a few minutes, but it became pretty evident that one club at one school may be getting the same compensation as another club in another school, but there was vastly difference of how much time, energy, and effort was being done at each school. So, there was equity issues that were really becoming quite problematic. So, this is another one of these issues that we really needed to address. And again, I give, through the negotiation process, I give everyone who was part of that credit because to build it right in and say, we're going to do this, we did. The committee was formed with the WTA and the WA and the central office. And so, we worked with the union leadership to, to make this committee come to fruition. And we created and developed some things that I think you're going to find pretty interesting through this presentation. And first up, to talk about the committee, is Keith Boardman.
So, we started off with the process, and the very first process obviously was creating the committee itself. So, members on the committee who sat down and really hashed through this included WTA representatives, Nora Bender, Scott Horton, Alexis Langhier, and Chuck Miller. We started off with a smaller group of representation from the high school and middle school principals, but really as the process began to expand, all of us, all of the high school and middle school principals joined in eventually. We also had Dr. McKenna, Molly Cooper, Tony, and Dr. Baylen join us. As we, really going back to negotiations, and we began looking at this as an item we wanted to talk about, we were discovering that this was a much larger issue than perhaps something that you could actually do in the course of a standard negotiations. So, as we went through, this is just talking about middle school and high school, we actually discovered that if you're talking strict dollar amounts, we had 92 different stipends that we were, that we were giving out. Some of those were fairly easily, you know, explained or they were off by maybe a dollar. So, you know, a yearbook club in one school may make whatever it is, a hundred dollars and, for the three high schools, and then it's a hundred and one and a hundred and two with the other ones. And none of us know why that actually happened. Some of them had to do with really things that had happened over the course of many, many years. What often happens with things like this is, things are placed into a contract and then, you know, life exists and the contract is there, and dollar amounts start getting split and changed and moved for the benefit really of the schools. But ultimately, what ends up happening is, you have 92 different stipends out there. And so, one of the things we wanted to do was clean, clean that up and really sort of organize the process. We also discovered that activities and extracurriculars are being done differently at different schools, and yet they're being compensated exactly the same. And that was one of the things we really felt strongly about addressing. You know, if you have a newspaper club stipend that is a certain amount, and one of the schools publishes a newspaper every week and it's 24 pages long, and the other school publishes one once a month and it's two pages long, there's obviously a vast difference in what's being done. And yet, you know, if you have those listed in the contract as this is what the newspaper makes, those people will get the same amount of money. And we wanted to recognize that, yes, two, the same club in, in three different high schools, for instance, for the high school level, can be different. They can actually look different. There was also no consistent approach to evaluating any of our existing clubs or proposing new activities or clubs. So, while we were all evaluating clubs at the end of a year, we weren't doing it in any consistent manner, we weren't necessarily even using the same criteria as we went through. And we felt strongly that we had to do that. We had to have something that was more consistent across the board. And then also, specific extracurricular clubs or activities were listed in the contract, which happens oftentimes. You don't necessarily, when you're negotiating, look at what the contract says for all the different clubs. You're usually, once those things were placed in there, you're more concerned about the dollar amounts or how long things are going. So, for instance, as an example, we look through the club, and I use it all the time, the South Rifle Club was still listed as one of our extracurriculars. The rifle range has been gone for a very long time at South High School. We were not going to have a rifle club any time in the future, and yet, there it was. And probably what really was, you know, more troublesome to us was, a dollar amount was listed for it. So, you now get into this issue of, well, okay, are we saving that money? Are we, is that money actually set aside? What's happening with that money? And if it is being set aside, wouldn't we rather put it towards a club that we can actually use in our school or that exists? So, we wanted to be able to really, ultimately, as we talked about why the change, all of those things existed and we wanted to create a process that was more living and breathing and that could be, that could be consistent for all of our schools, but also be malleable as we went through the process. And we didn't have to wait every four years or every, you know, 25 years to actually adjust those issues.
Good evening, I'm Alexis Langhier, I'm one of the four WTA members that were on the committee. If we could just jump to the next slide, please. I do? Excuse me, sorry about that. There we go. Thank you. So, as Keith alluded to, we really wanted to see more consistency in the process and in the system. So, while clubs can look different across the three different high schools and can be contextualized to the students that are in those buildings, to what is happening, the circumstances, we still really wanted the process to be fair and to be flexible. We saw that consistency to be what mattered most. And so, by developing the system, by the conversations that we had extensively, really in the front end of this committee, we really spent a lot of time figuring out, okay, what would make for a consistent process? And the, you know, our points that we kept coming back to is, we need it to be fair, even if it's not the same, but we also need it to be flexible. We wanted it to be something that, if we're establishing this committee that's going to consistently now meet on an annual basis, that they can adjust and adapt as students and buildings naturally and very organically, as schools do, evolve and adjust and adapt. So, ultimately, we worked to create this fair and flexible process. We focused on, really, there's four major points that were refined or evolved with our committee and with this process. So, the first one, I mean, all of these really addressed the issues that were just raised in regards to the previous system that was in place. So, the first one is that levels are set annually by the committee based on the previous year's work. So, we established through the process that each year, the committee is going to reconvene and set the levels for each club in each building separately. And so, that, again, that's, that created that, here's the system that's fair, but now here's also the process that's going to happen on an annual basis. We also determined that the name of a club in itself won't be what sets a stipend. So, as the previous contract had before set, for example, the English Club, or, excuse me, a newspaper club, you know, a newspaper club that puts out a newspaper once a week versus one that puts out once a quarter, those are two drastically different experiences for students and work for advisors. And so, now we can adapt and adjust and meet the needs, or rather, fulfill a different stipend based on the work that's actually being done. So, instead of the name being what dictates the stipend, it's really the work that puts in for students and with students and with the whole school and the community. We also looked at, you know, different schools having those same activities or just different activities. So, it might now be the case where different activities run at different buildings and those adjust and adapt appropriately to those schools and those contexts. And that the joint committee, which is still the WTA plus WAA members plus district staff, really, that whole committee is going to continue to come together and determine those levels on an annual basis. So, there's that ongoing flexibility that we knew we wanted. So, Jeff's now going to talk about how we would set up the clubs.
Thanks, Alexis. So, the process for the established clubs, the clubs that are already running, the advisor will complete an evaluation form at the, close to the end of the school year, and that evaluation form is on WITS. The principal will review that form and add comments. And after the forms are completed, there will be a joint WTA and administrator committee that will review all the evaluations and place specific extracurricular clubs and activities on levels based on all of the considerations. The principal continues to have discretion over which clubs will run the following year based on the budget, which is the same as it's always been. And the principal informs the advisors of approval and stipend level of placement. The evaluation form categories consist of three, or, I'm sorry, seven separate areas. The connection to school goals and/or curriculum, number of students directly involved and impacted by the club, time commitment for the advisor, including after-school evenings, weekends, overnights, things like that, managing equipment and safety concerns, involvement with groups outside of school, including parents, community, and affiliated organizations, management of money, and finally, qualitative impact on the school. So, at this time, I'll turn it over, back over to Alexis.
So, as you can see on the chart here, we established levels A through G. And we determined these levels based on the amounts that were actually with the prior contract. We looked at about where they were financially, what were the previous stipends at, and we tried to then, you know, create really similar ones for the most part. And so, we created levels A through G from 1,600 being the top type stipend, down to 450. And then, the exception to this, or the other component to this, is that we did, as a committee, determine that there were some, some extracurriculars that these are consistent across the board, that in all of our middle schools and high schools, these have some significant presence. And not only are they present, but they're the same. And even if advisors change, that the work is going to stay the same. And really, that these are needed programs that establish culture and community in each of the schools. So, these have really such a significant presence, as you can see from the list, from yearbook, musical, student councils, class advisors. At the middle school, certainly, the talent show and variety shows have a major aspect to the school culture and the school community. And so, really, these were established as, as a committee, we decided that these should stay the same year to year to year. So, regardless of who's advising and what exactly went in as far as the work, that these were the amounts that were established for those different items. And those ranged from 4,400 as the highest stipend for any extracurricular, down to 1,100. And Molly's joining us.
So, as student interest ebbs and flows and membership ebbs and flows, we also wanted a clear and accessible way for our faculty to propose a new club initiative to their principal. So, we did solidify a form for the faculty's use. It's posted to WITS, and it allows them to outline their proposed club activities, schedule for the year, and their goals, and even student signatures for participation that they've solidified, and they put that on the form for their principal's review. And we wanted a clear cutoff towards the beginning of the school year. So, we set a deadline of October 15th for those new club proposals to be eligible for stipend in the first year. And while that first year runs and it's piloting in a way, the club would run at level G, which is the lowest stipend level, that $450. But after it runs for a year and we can evaluate the amount of work and, and interest in this activity, then it's leveled at the end of the year with the other activities, and it can go to whatever stipend is appropriate after it becomes an established club. So, we have a little review of other important deadlines for you of how this will be streamlined each year. So, we also have April 1st to May 1st for the faculty member to do self-evaluation and do their annual application to continue, as well as review of activities. From May 1st to May 15th, our principals have opportunity to review that submission from the faculty member and add any comments or questions. And then, it's brought to full committee in that month-time period from May 16th to June 15th. And at that time, the committee reviews and also makes a final recommendation for clubs to go forward and what the stipend will look like based on the past year's activities. So, we make sure that all that faculty notification goes out by the last school day, and that way, everyone can prepare for a new school year.
And so, to move forward with this, this past year, in February, this actually went to a vote through the, excuse me, went to a vote with the WTA. This was after there was already conversations at each building principals and the administration was already having conversations with their staff. We then had a large meeting, a joint meeting from the whole committee at South High School where we invited all WTA members to come, listen, ask questions, have an opportunity. We built in quite a bit of time after that to continue conversations, continue to be able to answer questions as they came up before the ultimate vote. And then, an MOA was crafted and we did vote and approve on this. And last spring, we actually met as a committee and established the first of, the first of the levels that were then carried out for this current school year.
So, what comes next? We've been through one full year. I believe, as my colleagues have shared, we have found great success with what has been put forward, and certainly, a hallmark has been the collaborative effort that all stakeholders involved have come together and continue to. So, this spring, the joint committee of the WTA, WAA, and district office staff will meet again. It's a cyclical, continual effort. So, right now, we're already building the blocks of what is in WITS. So, we have one year's record, if you will, of all of the existing clubs, whether they're new or were in existence prior to this process. So, there is really essentially a history that's been started. So, advisors are able to, at this point, go into the system and look at their previous submission and use that to craft their next one if they so desire. From an administrative perspective, we will have now an ability to have in our system a way of capturing what happens year to year with our students and what has been offered. So, we are very excited to continue with the process and certainly, looking at the experiences our students are having and also from a contractual standpoint and a monetary standpoint, the associated annual stipend reviews by the committee will continue. So, with that, our presentation is concluded and we are happy to address any questions that you may have.
Thank you very much, Dr. Baylen, and to everyone who presented tonight, are there any questions or comments from the board?
Just have one.
I'll start at the end and we'll move down. Ms. Piguer?
Thanks. Another excellent presentation. Thank you so much. Very thoughtful idea about looking at this as a board member to see the list of all these stipends. I wondered about some of them because it ends up adding to so much, and yet, at the same time, it's these clubs and opportunities we have for kids that really make school an enjoyable place for so many kids. So, thank you for your thoughtful organization. My question is, I know this is just the first year we're looking through, I'm curious if, is, I'm sorry, I'm curious if reevaluating it in this way has found that we are spending the same amount of money on extracurriculars? Are we saving money? Do we know that yet, or is it too soon in the process? I'm just curious how the shift in focus and how we're compensating people who are working with these activities has impacted the extracurricular fund as a whole.
It's basically the same. We added a little bit of money, I know, not, not a whole lot, to, to the lines to see what would happen, but we're going to review that with Dr. or with Mr. Maturzky to see exactly where it was. But it should be somewhere about the same. I know that they have budgets in their buildings and they had to stay within those budgets.
Right.
So, it is, but I guess I could ask some of the principals, what did you guys see?
Well, I think, yeah, I think probably what, you know, what Dr. McKenna said is, what's most important is, we're still bound by the budget for our building. So, we're aware of what our budget is. I think where this gives us really the flexibility now is, as we have new clubs that come on, more than likely, what we're going to see is, any clubs that I would say have sort of, I don't know, for lack of a better term to say it, died their natural death, they'll actually kind of come off, which is not something necessarily that we always had. I think sometimes, you know, one of the things that tended to happen was, there was always this thought, well, this will reemerge and maybe we'll get it. And, you know, oftentimes, you can have several years of a club that really just isn't running that much. But we're still, as principals, we're still, still bound by our, the budget that we have. And so, even when, so, for instance, I, you know, I'll give you an example, in my building right now, I was approached the other day about Italian Club, which is a club we had years ago, we have not had it for many years, it's now coming back. Part of my responsibility now is, in terms of adding it, and I had a conversation with the person who came to me, the teacher who said she was willing to advise it, was making her aware that it is possible that she would not be paid for it, for the, for the time being. Because what I have to do in order to shift it into the, you know, sort of what I would have to do is gauge a little bit, if I'm shifting it into a paid club, which is now going to go for one year, it'll go on the lowest level, I also have to be very cognizant of the fact that if that Italian club suddenly has 100 kids and they're meeting once a week, that could actually, that, that number could actually go as high as the A club. And so, I do have to be aware of the, you know, if I'm going to pay, if we're going to pay the, I think it's 450 for the, for the lowest level, I have to to pay the, I think it's four hundred and fifty for the lowest level, I have to be aware and sort of thinking ahead to, well, what if this jumps to sixteen hundred? That still needs to fall under my budget. And that way, I'm not, you know, calling Tom and saying, "Tom, I'm in trouble." Because Tom doesn't like those calls, and I don't like making them. And so we do have a system in place to sort of keep that, keep those, the number relatively stable.
Mr. Boardman?
Yep.
Who has the authority to determine the stipend level for a club in a school? Is it the committee? Is it the principal? Is it the principal following or not following the committee? What's ultimately, who's ultimately responsible here?
Yeah, so the only, the only, the only group that can determine what a stipend level is, is actually the committee, which is a joint committee made up of WTA and WAA members or district office people. So once I place a club into the, into the payment hopper, so if I have enough money where I feel like I can put this Italian club in to be paid, the committee, the joint committee, will ultimately make the determination after that first year as to what that club is. I, what I am really responsible for is which clubs are going to get paid ultimately as a large, as the whole. But what I can't do, and it is one of the problems that we tried to fix, which is that, you know, I might have eight hundred bucks, and normally, I should pay the Italian club a thousand dollars, but I don't have a thousand, so I'm going to give you eight hundred. And now I've created another level of payment, which is, I think, part of what we found in looking at those ninety-two different stipend levels. And, you know, I may have been guilty of that at some point in my time before we had this, where I wanted to get the person some compensation, so I gave them a compensation that really, that really might not have been the appropriate compensation. I don't have that ability anymore.
But aren't you, as the principal, I mean, despite what the committee may say, most in touch with what the club does, what they're involved in, how active they are?
I always think that's true.
Yeah, right.
You know, I think, I think part of what's really nice about this process is, they're giving, you know, what we've asked for, and with the ability, with the WITS form, is that they now have the ability really to give us a lot of information that we sometimes weren't collecting before. And so what that allows us to do, the way we actually structured the comparisons when we did it the first time, the first thing we did is we actually structured the comparisons in terms of all those categories that we talked about to clubs in my own building. So South was compared again to South to start off. And then we actually did a comparison of South to everybody else. And so what you're really kind of doing is you're looking at, you know, ultimately, you're taking a very broad look at, where do these clubs? So the newspaper club at South may not closely, most closely match to the newspaper club at East. And I will tell you that that's true. That's a true example for us. It may most closely match a different club in terms of the, you know, all those different categories. And so what we were able to do was really take a very strong look, using those data points, at where they match up and then which level they would go in. So ultimately, as a principal, I have, I determine which clubs are paid in my building. But I don't determine the stipend level. I have a part in determining the stipend level, but the stipend level itself would be chosen by the committee.
Did you find in the first year that the decisions or thoughts of the committee on stipend levels was fair and appropriate and objective?
I did, absolutely. I thought the process was really good. I think we will obviously, will refine, and you'll see things as you go. I think, you know, I think probably the strength of this is that ability to look at things at how they're being done and say, well, you know, jeez, this one has gone up, and this one has gone down, and really take a look at it. You know, what I always say is, there are no exact matches. So every club that's in the D column is a little bit different. But you do begin seeing sort of the similarities as you're going, as you're going across. And I think what is, what's most important is, you know, as I said, it's a joint WTA wa committee. It is, it is truly, you have those discussions in the room. Well, what makes this one different than this one? And you can actually talk about that. And I think the discussions in the room, and anybody else can back me up on that, were really strong in terms of figuring out where those levels would be, and how these are the clubs that seem to match up with each other.
Anybody else on my right have any questions or comments?
Just one out of curiosity, really. Did you see an increase, I know it's just the first year, an increase or a decrease in returning advisors that were maybe no longer interested because maybe they weren't taking a pay decrease now that this has been determined? Or even the fact that they now have to fill out an evaluation form at the end, proving and validating what they're doing? Have you seen a shift?
Well, there's, it is a pretty detailed form now that they have to fill out, and there is a lot of justification. But my understanding is, and I'll again refer to the principals in a second, is that the majority of the club advisors did come back and they still are advising the clubs. Am I correct on that?
Yeah, yes. Every club that I ran last year is running this year.
Great.
Why'd we do this for, then?
Thank you.
Well, it's fair and flexible, right? The one slide that we show, it makes it fair and flexible.
If there's flexibility, there should be some new clubs and not, oh, everything's just the same as it was last year.
I also have some new clubs.
Can we cut him off?
I'm just pushing back at the Extracurricular Advisor Club Committee, Planning Committee, that's all.
And Rifle Club is not around.
That's a good one.
Are there any questions or comments on my left? No, okay. I just have, well, one comment and then one question. I very much appreciate the clear procedures and the norming that's going on with us. It's just, it's just, everything that you've described just makes a lot of sense. Having worked in a building for a very long time, you see a lot. And so I appreciate all of the detail and work around this. I actually have two questions, but they're quick. If a club has more than one advisor, like a co-advisor situation, are they splitting that stipend, or how is that working?
Yes.
Okay. And then I see that the number of students directly involved is one of the items for the evaluation form criteria. Is that being documented by how many kids sign up for the club at the beginning of the year? Because I know that sometimes everyone wants to get their name, that they're on the list for a club because it looks good for scholarships, things like that. But then life happens, and nobody shows up. And by the time, end of the year, you know, sometimes the attendance can fizzle out. So I'm just curious about that.
They take attendance sheets, and so it's based on actual attendance. But again, I refer to...
Yeah, we also actually have multiple questions. So we have how many kids? We have the question for how many kids signed up at the beginning of the year, but we also have questions of what was the average attendance for each of your meetings throughout the year? How many meetings did you have throughout the year? The forms, yeah, how many officers do you have? And then through WITS, they can actually attach attendance sheets. And in fact, through WITS, they can, they can actually list their students and take attendance right on it, so that we can see who was in attendance at what meetings.
That's excellent right there. That's amazing. Thank you.
That was part of our discussion when we were putting this together, too. Then we, so we put it on WITS for just that reason. So excellent question.
Okay, thank you. Thank you to everyone here who stayed. It's after nine o'clock, so thank you so much for all of your work.
Thank you to Dr. Martslove and the board for letting us do these projects. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you very, very much.
All right, moving on in our agenda, we are on item thirteen D, and this is our district safety plan for two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty. Is there a motion to adopt and approve the district-wide and building-level safety plans as presented? Mr. Meyer first, and Ms. Piguer second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of the district safety plan. Thank you. Opposed, abstentions, motion carried unanimously. Dr. Martslove, would you like to talk to us about our district goals and progress?
Yes, in your packet this evening is information as relates to where we are in terms of achieving our district goals and the progress we're making to achieving those goals. And I'm happy to answer any questions from Board of Education members.
Are there any questions regarding the district goals? I actually have one. Can you tell us in terms of timeline when we might expect to hear some answers regarding guidelines to grading?
In terms of seeing actual guidelines for grading for different courses or different grade levels at various schools, I would not expect to see that anytime soon.
Anyone else with a question or comment? Okay, thank you. Item fourteen is finance. Budget development, program continuation, and support and expense information. Dr. Martslove?
Yes, this is our first report for the board as we go into the budget season, as we develop next year's budget. And I'll turn it over to Mr. Maturski, who will share some more specific information. Mr. Maturski?
Thank you, Dr. Martslove. This is our initial review, January review of the budget development process. What you are seeing is the draft, the first version of it. And as in the past, it's showing the program increases on the left side of the page. That would be for the upcoming two thousand twenty-one budget. That's to keep everything in the same forum as what we currently have today. And we have some items, as you're going to see on the other budget slides, that are to be determined. The numbers here, though, are our latest estimates, and the first one is salaries. And that's the contractual increases. And we have a number for next year of four million, seven hundred and twelve thousand and two hundred and fifty-three dollars. Regarding the social security tax, that is an item that goes up based upon salary increases and any changes by the federal government in the FICA limit. And that is estimated at this time to go up three hundred thousand dollars. We are still working on estimating our health insurance increases, so that's why you see it to be determined. And our BOSI's increase of four hundred thousand dollars is an estimate at this time. We have a meeting with Erie One BOSI scheduled for the last week in January, and our administrative team here will be meeting with them. They will give us the detailed service cost reports at that time. So as we get into the February meeting, we should have an updated number for that item. And then lastly, our transportation is, the increase there is actually set by the New York State Education Department Transportation Division. They provide us with what the CPI rate is for transportation services. When we receive that figure, we will do a calculation on what that impact would be. So with those items as listed, we have an increase of five million, second, four hundred and twelve thousand, two hundred and fifty-three dollars, and a working budget of two hundred million, five hundred and ninety-seven dollars and ninety-one dollars, five hundred and ninety-seven thousand and ninety-one dollars, or two point seven seven percent. And the items in that one column, I just want to mention, C is contractual, and M is mandatory. So those are items that we do not have a tremendous amount of control over. The other side of the budget is just there as a reference. You see that each year. And right now, there's just an estimated number for salaries in there based upon what we're seeing this year. So that gives us an idea, if we were to try and look into the future, what would we be looking at in the following year? The next slide here is just a review of program support. Program support items, as in the past, they represent what we would like to review and potentially implement. This is the initial draft. There can be more items added as we move forward in the budget development process. And you're going to see that for most of these items, we have to be determined. For this January draft, we have team leader positions under the instructional category that we're contemplating, under the exceptional education and student services area. We're looking at considering an increase in mental health support for students. Instructional technology, we're looking to review and determine what our staffing needs might be here for that program. Administration, this is the continuation of the addition of the assistant principals at the elementary level, and the transition of a administrative position for the faculty manager at the high school. This is the last year of that program, and that's a hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars. And then lastly, there is a request to increase equipment. That would be a hundred thousand. So that's a two hundred and fifty-four thousand dollar increase. And again, looking at this as what it would mean to the base budget, and that's what the starting point is, that's a hundred and ninety-five million, four hundred and thirty-eight thousand, eight hundred and thirty-eight dollars. And we do have the reduction that is from last year's transition to transportation that we did. That's a five hundred thousand dollar decrease, so we're able to take advantage of that. And then our working budget then would be presently, the reduction amount or the increase amount is five million, one hundred and sixty-six million, two hundred and fifty-three thousand, or two hundred thousand, three fifty-one, oh, ninety-one, at two point six five percent for this point of the budget development process. So that is where we're at presently, and we certainly have a lot more discussions to occur and much more information to occur before we conclude the process sometime in April.
Thank you, Mr. Maturski. Are there any questions or comments from our board? Mr. McCann?
Thanks for that. I see that Comptroller DiNapoli is saying that the average tax cap is going to be less than two percent this year. I think he stated it to be one point eight one, obviously with different variations for each district. Most of the percentage increases I see there are above two percent. But I know this is not talking about the tax levy. Where do we look to stand on that in your estimation at this point?
We'll be providing the tax cap information at the next meeting. But you're correct, I, the CPI rate provided for this year is one point eight one percent, so it's below two. I think last year, our increase was a little bit higher at over two, at two percent plus our exemptions. It was about three point eight million. So we're going to be below that this year, definitely, in our maximum tax levy increase.
Will we likely pull from reserves to meet the difference, then?
I would not recommend using reserves to do that. I think what we have always done in the past is try to come up with reductions in our budget to balance it. And we're still very early in the process, so we'll be looking for those items.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Mr. Lemay?
The line item, the team leader positions, there's a four thousand dollar per appointment position. Where does that number derive from? Because I know this position hasn't existed in a number of years. And do we have a rough estimate as to how many positions we're looking at potentially?
Well, the four thousand dollars is spoken to in the contract. I think it's like three thousand, eight hundred and ninety dollars, or some rough amount like that. So that is called for in the contract, and the only way to change that amount is to negotiate a change with the union that would allow us to pay a different amount per stipend. I will say that eight and a half years ago, when we were completing a budget with significant budget cuts, we had a hundred and, I don't want to say the wrong number. I'm just going to say around a hundred and ninety team leader positions. It was nineteen percent of all teachers were a team leader. And we cut that way down to forty-five. So we do have CSE, CST, some special ed, school counseling at the high school, some different ones where we have team leaders still functioning in the district, but we have cut that down significantly. So the question becomes in the budget discussion is, number one, does that number need to stay at four thousand? Can we negotiate a lower amount per person? And number two, if we do add team leaders, which areas, at which schools, or at which level, elementary, middle, or high school, are we looking to add team leaders? And how many are we looking to add, and why? In other words, what's the rationale? So we would need to discuss all of that in the future.
So potentially, just for us to project, we're looking at roughly five hundred and forty thousand dollar line item, potentially, if nothing's...
That was about what the savings was in the cut, yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, everyone. Our next item is item fourteen B. Approve annual continuation of the district's Medicaid compliance program. Is there a motion to resolve to adopt the district's annual Medicaid compliance program as presented in your packet? Mr. Bornstein, thank you. Mr. Lemay, second. Is there any discussion on this item? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed, abstentions? Thank you. Motion carried unanimously. Our next item is to establish a retirement contribution reserve, sub-fund pertinent to the New York State teacher retirement system. Is there a motion to resolve to authorize the Williamsburg Central School District to establish a sub-fund within said retirement contribution reserve pursuant to section 6R of the general municipal law as presented? Mrs. Vancis, thank you. Mr. Mecca, second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Thank you. Opposed, abstentions? Motion carried unanimously. Is there a motion to approve the tax settlement and transfer amount from tax sorcery reserve to fund this payment as presented in item D? Mr. Bornstein, thank you. Mr. Lemay, second. Is there any discussion? Dr. McClary?
I just have a sort of a question that I've been wanting to ask for several months, probably to Mr. Maturski. I'm assuming legally that these decisions of tax, property tax settlements are done by the town. Is the district consulted on any of these, since it affects our budgets also?
We have our own independent legal counsel that represents us on all of these, and they communicate directly with me, and we have some interesting discussions. But yes, you're 100 percent correct. The assessor and the town of Amherst, or whatever town the property resides in, they essentially are responsible for the settlement. But we do participate, and we do get many, many of these settlements are structured to our benefit.
Thank you.
I can't see whose hand is... Mr. Mecca, thank you.
Oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
Just out of curiosity, then, what would happen if this body rejected those agreements? Just out of, I mean, we always just raise our hands because we know it's kind of outside of our negotiations. It was the town that did it. I'm just wondering what would happen if we rejected it?
I would probably have to go back to legal counsel to answer that question.
Don't worry.
Mr. McClary, did you have a question?
No, I was just gonna just provide a little bit more info to Mr. McClary's question, only because I know, as a matter of fact, that the town attorney's office works in conjunction with the assessor, and one of the town prosecutors is, almost does it like a full-time job with the assessor.
Yes, my question was more to make sure that, since it involves district income or outcome, that we at least were able to be part of the discussion, whether, you know, I know we don't make the final decision, but I had been wanting to ask that for a while. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed, abstentions? Motion carried unanimously. Item 15 is our liaison reports. If you have any liaison reports, please send them to Mrs. Carey. The listed meeting dates are in board docs. Since our last regular board meeting, has anyone attended a school event that they wish to report on? Thank you. Are there any legislative matters that anyone would like to discuss? Number 17 is curriculum. Dr. Martslove, would you like to introduce our presentation on the continuum of student services and supports?
Sure, thank you, Mrs. Leatherboro. At this time, I'm going to ask Dr. Baylen and Mr. Skanzuzo to share information with the board about our continuum of student services and supports across the district, and what it is that we do, how we do it, and provide a flavor for some of that information that comes up at different times in preparation for the board potentially approving our academic intervention services plan. So Dr. Baylen and Mr. Skanzuzo, I'll turn it over to both of you.
Thank you, Dr. Martslove. You're going to hear Dr. Baylen and myself refer to many different acronyms, RTI, AIS, CST, CSE, and what wouldn't education be without a few acronyms, right? So we'll walk you through what all of them mean and the level of involvement that they play here at the district. Thank you. So RTI is a process to determine if a student is responding to instruction and making the expected progress. The bullets on the slide describe the elements, the major elements of RTI. All students at the K-4 level are included as part of the RTI process. RTI is focused on the area of reading. Students are assessed using a screening tool three times per year in the fall, winter, and spring. In our district, the universal screening tool used for RTI is called FastBridge. This consists of short assessments or subtests that are grade level specific and include different aspects of the reading process, decoding, comprehension, phonics, just to name a few. Students are asked to read and interpret reading passages, and discrete skills are assessed, one example of which might be letter-sounding relationships. As this is only a screening tool, other data and assessments must be considered when determining the next best steps to meet the students, the needs of the students. RTI includes both quantitative and qualitative aspects, such as teacher observation and student work samples. A team needs to review student information and determine how to best respond to what they're seeing. This is the portion of the process where research-based interventions, in addition to the core instructional programming, are discussed. A team typically is comprised of the building administrator, classroom teachers, specialist, and school psychologists. Process monitoring refers to assessing and monitoring students' progress and performance with relation to specific skills. This process is used to determine if the instructional supports provided are addressing the identified areas of need. This also provides information for the teacher to further customize his or her instruction to meet the student's needs. Tools are used to progress monitor include FastBridge tools, along with other classroom-based or grade-level measures. Supports are provided within and outside of the classroom. The frequency of monitoring is dependent on the student's need. This can be done as frequently as on a weekly basis. Once it's determined that the student has reached proficiency, or the desired level of student progress has been attained, students may be exited from their respective layers of support. As a best practice, students should be continually, continue to be informally monitored so that any additional needs that arise may be identified and addressed. The origin of RTI dates back to 2004, but are still in place today. And as you can see by the second bulleted point, RTI is required by regulation. I'll pass it over to Dr. Baylen.
Thank you, Mr. Skanzuzo. Good evening again. So in regulation, the area in which you'll find RTI reflected is Commissioner's Regulations 100.2. It's actually the same area of the regulations, just a different subsection when we fast forward to our discussion on AIS. So they both exist within the same section. The RTI framework, research, however, as well, is not unique to New York, as it exists nationwide, and mandates exist in several other states. It's interesting, in doing some research, fewer than 20 states in the United States require RTI. However, the Center for the Response to Intervention shared that in the Every Student Succeeds Act, or ESSA as we know it, which is the federal legislation for public education, it references a multi-tiered system of support five different times, and most importantly, its use in literacy. So you can see, and before this, actually in federal regulation, systems of support, RTI, whatever terminology has been chosen to be used, has never existed in any of those documents. So ESSA does make it clear that a multi-tiered system of support is recognized as an approach for improving outcomes for students, all students. This includes our students with disabilities, as well as our English language learners. So the terminology, and Mr. Skanzuzo mentioned the acronyms, you'll hear several. So if you hear MTSS, that's the Multi-Tierred System of Supports, that's essentially the same type of approach that we're talking about with RTI. So I see acronyms changing at times, so that may be one we foresee in the future coming to pass. So just to give you a sense of what this looks like from a visual perspective, RTI, as you can see on the screen here and pointing to the yellow circle in the middle, was implemented with a specific purpose to ensure that a systematic process was in place for identifying and addressing student needs in reading as a precursor to any referrals made to special education. Almost 15 years ago, with the 2004 reauthorization of the IDEA, or the Individuals with Disabilities Act, the concept of RTI was actually introduced there as an alternative to what was called, with the prior approach, a discrepancy model for eligibility. So that may be some history, just for your reference, as we move forward in the presentation, as to why this was implemented and what the timing was for that particular implementation. Although at the time, it appeared to be coming from a special education vantage point or initiative, the US DOE, as well as state entities, made it clear that this is, in fact, a general education system of supports. So you will hear, as the presentation goes on, who's impacted, how they're impacted, what our program looks like, and some of the supports that we provide here in the district. Just to give you a sense, again, from a research perspective, since the time 15 years ago, numerous studies have found that tiered systems of support can result in such things as sustained academic performance, reduction in behavioral challenges, as well as referrals to special education being reduced, and improved graduation rates. One of the researchers that's pretty prominent in our field, John Hattie, also ranked the multi-tiered system in RTI as sixth out of 195 most influential variables on student achievement. So there is a research component to this that you can see is pretty prominent. So again, just to present a visual, and you'll see on the next slide, there's more of a narrative description about how is RTI structured. Why we like this particular visual is that it's very clear, just looking at the triangular portion, for example, starting from the bottom. So where you see the green, the greater proportion of the triangle, is what we call interventions for all students. So RTI is actually designed, first and foremost, to speak to core instruction. What is every student receiving? So unlike what you may hear about AIS a little later on in the presentation, this particular approach encompasses every student in our district at the K through 4 level. Why is it K through 4? Because that's where it's required. Where you'll hear a little bit more about the K through 12 continuum is with AIS later in the presentation. As you move up the triangle and you get to the yellow and then the red, you'll see, again, yellow is second in proportion and red, the smallest proportion. Approximately, just moving from the bottom on up again, approximately 80 or plus more percent of our students should be having their needs met in that green area. So in other words, in the classroom, through the core instructional program. Should they have difficulties? One of the purposes, again, of RTI is to have a structured approach in place whereby it is, just like we spoke about with the hiring and some of the elements under the HR umbrella, a consistent process across grade levels, schools, and subject areas to identify needs and also address needs on an ongoing basis. So with the yellow, it is an intervention approach that is then used in addition to the core instruction. So we will share with you what some of those examples look like, but there are several examples of supports across our schools in the area of literacy that are used to support students' needs. Once you get to that third level, which is the red, that's a tertiary level of intervention, reserved really primarily for the most intensive support, should a student need that level of support based on their needs and based on what teachers and principals and the teams that we spoke of are seeing. This is really reserved for a very small proportion of our students, and typically may look like a one-on-one instruction model. You may be familiar with our reading recovery program, for example. That is a one-on-one intervention that is given over 20 weeks of time for students who are in need of an intensive support. So that is one example of a third tier of intervention. So I just want to show you on the screen here in just a more narrative form, you actually have descriptors of the tiers, tiers 1, 2, and 3, as they apply to literacy and what those may look like. Again, I would start with that bottom, that top tier, and move down. So in our program, all students receive their core reading instruction in the classroom. That's a non-negotiable. Expectations are clear, bless you. The teacher is the primary interventionist in that model, and a core program approach or process is used. It has to be research-based. So in our case, we have a balanced literacy program. You actually heard the overview, including the workshop model, but couched within a balanced literacy framework. That was one of the pieces presented to the board at a prior meeting. So you're very familiar with what the literacy program looks like in the K through 4 grade levels. From there, again, based on data, based on observations, based on a multitude of data available to the teams, and really, this lives and breathes at the building level, should students require another level of support, what that looks like is an additional 30 minutes of reading instruction beyond what they're receiving in the classroom. Again, the idea here is that students are receiving both the core and an additional supplemental piece to get their needs met. And if at any point, and this is a fluid process, I want that really out there for the board to be aware, and as you know, it is imperative that we do not isolate and/or sort of put a life sentence to anything that's being done, because as needs are changing, we have to also change our approaches. So there may be needs that are met, and that may mean that other students have different needs which have to be met for them. So it's imperative, it's essential, moving forward, that monitoring take place, because that will actually determine if and when students exit and what changes need to be made to their program. Again, at the third level, you're really talking about, now again, once again, an additional layer of support, and reading recovery was one of the examples that I gave as one of those pieces. But it's really critical that, prior to getting to that point, we exhaust all the other levels first. So in other words, the strength of the core program really becomes an essential discussion point here. That core instruction is just like building a house. Your foundation is your core. It has to be strong, so that is really what starts students off on a great footing from there, should they have needs that come out. We have other ways to meet that, using levels 2 and 3 of some tiers. We did want to share with you just briefly, anecdotally, without naming names, we did ask the schools to share with us some success stories of students that have made their way through the RTI process and have found success. There are so many, we obviously couldn't list them all here, but there were some that resonated with us that we would like to share this evening with you. At one of our elementary schools, there were two new second-grade students during the school year. Both were reading significantly below grade level, putting them at least a full year, if not more, behind their peers. On their FastBridge, their data put them at the lowest percentile for reading fluency. So what FastBridge does, and it's actually color-coded, you can see within a section or band, if they fall below the 20th percentile, that puts them at risk for, potentially, for being looked at. So it really is an alert more than anything else. So by the next spring, both were reading at a level, 20 levels beyond where they started in FastBridge. That's a huge jump, especially in an early grade like that. Currently, these students are fourth graders who no longer receive services. So that's the goal. You want to get them where they're able to stand on their feet, be successful, and not just at the current grade level, but also moving beyond. So that was a real success story. In another case, a student came to the district as a new first-grade student, and he received reading recovery during that fall and early into the spring. He was reading at a beginning-level text, very low, again, significantly below grade level. By the end of the year, he was reading a text 22 levels beyond where he started and did not need services beyond the 20 weeks of reading recovery. So again, these are just some anecdotes for you. It's important that, you know, we're always looking at data and statistics and guidelines and regulations, but there are faces behind all of these things. So I think hearing some of the success stories that we have in our district are important. And last but not least, we have a student in the fourth grade last year who's having some struggles. The school reports that the student moved on to middle school and is currently in fifth grade in one of our middle schools. He was included in RTI, did also end up receiving some AIS services, which we'll talk about in a few minutes. When he left the elementary, he was secure on grade-level reading and writing. He had also completed his phonics screening and mastered all of the skills that were present there. His fluency improved significantly, and he was not at risk by the end of fourth grade. His mother reports that he is thriving at the middle school. So this is what we want to hear, so we want to replicate that as much as possible. So this, again, gives you the trajectory. So, this, again, gives you the trajectory. So, where does it all start? It's that benchmarking, but as you can see through this arrow, there are team meetings, there are interventions, certainly a lot of dialogue and discussion, analysis of student needs. There's frequent monitoring, as Mr. Scanzuzo mentioned earlier, and then certainly, at any opportunity, looking for students to exit, because that's what we want, is we want them to move on and feel solid in what they are doing from a reading perspective. So, this visual representation gives us a nice sort of overview of what RTI looks like. Just to recap, and we, just in a quick fashion, won't go through every detail, but this slide reflects how student needs are determined for RTI, as well as the timeline for doing so. Just a refresher, that benchmarking refers to the assessment component using the screening tools. As previously mentioned, it's a significant part of the process to progress monitor. You'll also notice that in our AIS plan, we mentioned FastBridge as one of the multiple measures used in that process at the elementary level. The twenty-first percentile is used there as the threshold for the student to be considered for the program, because, as I mentioned, zero through twenty is really the national norm for the at-risk area revealed by the assessment. Other reading data that are used include, in addition to FastBridge, running records, which are reading, recording of what students' performance look like. The teacher records that as the student is reading. New York State assessments, that's to a much lesser degree. I'll address that in more in detail in a few minutes. The developmental reading assessment, which, again, is more of a running record-type tool. Other common assessments, Teachers College, we have benchmark assessments through TC, phonics and phonological awareness measures, word studies, and reading inventories. In addition, there are teacher observations, student work samples, and technology tools we have at our disposal. From a behavioral perspective, because RTI may cover some behavioral needs, these observations are done by school psychologists with targeted academic plans, parental input, lunch groups, and counselors with social workers, for example, and other significant data. Some of the supports that are included are in the area of social skills, connections, establishing healthy friendships, student ambassadors, goal-setting and monitoring, behavior plans, and home visits. So, just as a snapshot, and this will be different, if we, if Mr. Scanzuzo and I collected this from the buildings today, this would not look like this. This shows you, at a glance, as of December twentieth, right about when we were finalizing our documents for the presentation, what our Tier Two and Tier Three numbers look like at each school. Because it is fluid, it changes. So, we, for example, just had, in January, a, one of the benchmarks given. In addition, teams have been meeting to review where students are, the progress they've made, and any changes that need to occur. So, why did we put this slide up? Just to show you that, on any given day, this is fluid. They're paying a lot of attention to what students need. There are lots of large numbers here, which I'm very happy about, because that means we're paying close attention to the needs of students and intervening in a just-in-time fashion, and not waiting until we're at a critical juncture with some of those. There is a little bit of variation. Honestly, I would not make too much out of that. We talked with each principal and said, "Tell us what you're doing. Where are you in the process?" Some teams had not met yet, so some of that goes back to when the teams are getting together. So, that is really a byproduct, just really, of the timing of the dipstick, more than anything else. But we'll expect this to be fluid and change. If it was static, there would be a great concern, because what that means is, we're really not taking into account the day-to-day progress of students, which is actually counter to the philosophy of RTI. You really need to know where they are, and when to move. When to move on, and when to move new kids in, because it's a very, very, you know, variable kind of piece. So, moving on to AIS, and you probably noticed that there are several similarities here. So, you hear AIS, and you're thinking, "Wait a second. I know we have the AIS plan. We've heard about RTI. A lot of the terminology that we use when we talk about each one is similar." So, what we'd like to do here, just for informational purposes, is talk to you about what's similar, what's different, and why do we have two entities at our disposal. So, one piece is, RTI, as we have said, is readings focused for elementary grades K through four. That became the mandate, as Tony mentioned earlier, relative to that particular regulatory component, starting in 2012. AIS, however, actually dates back in New York State to the 2000 school year. So, the Board of Regents actually met in 1999 and conceptualized what they called this academic intervention support structure. So, unlike RTI, it's a requirement K through twelve, for the purposes of supporting grade level standards, as well as graduation requirements. So, RTI does not currently span into the middle or high school grades. You may be aware, New York State actually looked at piloting a middle school component, which they are doing on a very limited basis now. So, instead of going to math at elementary, they're going to middle school. So, it's just something they decided to do. I don't know where that will land. So, it's still in an early piloting initiative phase. So, AIS does have its own set of regulations. So, in the 100.2 section, there are actually separate regulations for AIS. There is a lot of overlap at elementary. You know, we talk about multiple measures, and how, you know, teams meeting, and meeting the needs of students. So, there is not a whole lot of difference, other than to say AIS actually covers more ground, because it includes math and other subject areas, and it actually goes beyond elementary. So, as a district, we are actually permitted to interchange, I'll say, for lack of a better way to put it, RTI and AIS at elementary. But what they want assurances about is that we're actually able to cover multiple grade level spans. Right now, we're not, because we don't extend RTI into the middle or high school. So, while the two exist, they're sort of coexisting, but we've tried to streamline, is any communication to families, so it doesn't become confusing, like, "What's RTI? And what is AIS? And what bucket do I fall into?" Because both require parental notification, both require certain, you know, things to be released to parents informationally. So, we've really tried really hard to kind of streamline it, because there's not a whole lot of difference when you're looking at the literacy piece. It's when you start looking at the other areas that you see a marked difference across the board. So, this support structure is defined very similar to RTI, but also, again, inclusive of middle and high, as additional support services which supplement the instruction delivered in the general curriculum. It is separate and aside from the core instruction. So, you've heard about in previous presentations, it could be a separate period at the middle or high school, for example, in which students go to receive an extra layer of support. We also do have available some before or after-school opportunities. That is not the case with RTI. That is all within the school day. For the purposes of identification, AIS is accomplished through a two-step process, beginning first with the ranges of identified scores from the state, but subsequently entertaining multiple measures to determine eligibility. The like, if you do not have a state score available, for whatever reason, the state score does not dictate the level of support. So, the lack of one also does not dictate the lack of support. So, in other words, if you're lacking, if you've not participated, or what's it, you've transferred into the district from a state or an area that doesn't have a state assessment, or something that we use here, that is not a reason to exclude anyone from receiving the support structure. So, what you'll notice, and as you have noticed in our plan, and I hope you noticed that this year's plan includes a very comprehensive account of a lot of the measures used at the buildings, much more so than our plan two years ago. And I thank the buildings for that, because we did a pretty extensive deep dive into what folks were doing. So, there's a lot in there. A thorough review of all of the educational performance and records of all students is considered holistically. So, no one measure should be the driving force. It isn't because of one measure, and you also don't exit based on one measure. It has to be a holistic, multiple-measures approach. So, AIS can be provided by classroom teachers and specialists and related service personnel. New York State certification must be held in the area in which AIS is being required. These include, and you'll notice in the plan, so, again, we won't go into great detail here, this comes in a lot of different forms. There's push-in and pull-out, there's differentiation of instruction, flexible grouping, individual skill and strategy instruction, co-teaching, conferring, consultation, and monitoring. They are all listed in the plan. They're all grade-level specific. Some are by subject area and grade-level bands when you get into the high school. So, that, in essence, concludes our AIS portion. You'll receive our plan, you know, happy at that time, and at the end of this presentation, if there are any questions further, we'll be happy to address those. And at this time, Mr. Scanzuzo is going to talk with us a little bit about CST and CSE.
So, the child study team, obviously, something that exists in all of our buildings. I could just tell you by number of students that were involved in eighteen nineteen, that the child study team by building, we're conferencing about. Country Park, we had thirty-seven last year. Dodge Elementary had fifty-three. Forest had forty. Heim had forty-three. Maple East had twenty-four. Maple West had twelve. So, really, CST is about, I mean, they frequently meet on a variety of grade levels. They could meet bi-weekly or weekly. They always have an agenda with minutes that are typically made available for others to, for the team to access, so they know exactly where students fall, as they're talking about them and talking about their progress. At the high school levels, these meetings occur frequently, they're ongoing, and as the student needs for support become more evident. Once a decision is made on the specific implementation of a program or programs, the student is closely monitored for anecdotal progress until a solution is found. Multiple meetings regarding a student may also be needed. Upon many unsuccessful attempts in increasing the student's progress, then a referral to the Committee on Special Education may be made. There, all data and evidence are presented for a general, from a general education perspective, prior to the Committee on Special Education referral. And I'll get into the Committee on Special Education for you. This is a multidisciplinary team, and is authorized to identify students in need of services by determining eligibility for classification, development, the developing and individual education plan, placing the student in a leach-restrictive environment, and providing appropriate services to meet the child's needs. An IEP accounts for a student's present level of performance in the areas of academic, social, and physical development. The team meets at least annually to review a child's IEP and progress towards their annual goals, to determine continued eligibility for programs and/or services. Parents and student voice also play an important role regarding the student's progress during these meetings. The committee of special, the committee also meets to review evaluations and assessments as a required component of initial eligibility determining, determination meetings and reevaluations minimally every three years. The special education coordinators, at all three levels, meet weekly to discuss, as a team-specific student needs, challenges, placements, and services, to provide the best possible outcomes for our child's development, ultimately leading to a level of growth and independence that allows young adults to lead productive lives with confidence in their abilities to advocate for themselves. In September of 2018, there were approximately twenty-two pending and are new independent cases that were in litigation or going to hearings. As of today, I'm happy to say that we have zero. That concludes our presentation, so we'll open it up to any questions you may have.
I want to thank you for your level of thoroughness and details, and providing all of this information to us. I'm going to start on the left, and we'll go down towards the other way. Mr. Maka.
Okay, in case I missed the information, just correct me if I'm wrong. You mentioned, with respect to RTI at the K through four level, you mentioned that a reading evaluation is used for entrance and exit into tiered supports. Is that right? Okay.
Yes, it's a universal screening tool. That's a required component of RTI implementation, and that is used. Yes, you're correct.
Okay. And then with that, do you use national norms for that, or?
We do.
National. Have you considered the use of local norms since you're collecting that data?
Yes, we actually speak extensively, myself, Mr. Scanzuzo, our elementary principals. We do have a teacher on special assignment who oversees RTI. He is very well-informed on both the national and local components, so that's actually reviewed annually. We've researched what the national norms are, what the local norms are, whether they need to be adjusted. We've actually made adjustments. So, currently, the number you see is not the number we've always had. It's necessary to do that, because data requires that. That's a continual analysis. So, yes, we look at both the national, as well as local.
Thanks.
Sure. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments on my left? Going to the right. Mrs. Bigger?
Thank you for such a comprehensive report. A lot of the questions I had were answered throughout the report, so I appreciate that very much. You mentioned that, when students exit, that it's fluid, which is great to hear. Looking in that AIS plan, I see that you have different measures of exit criteria, and you said that you use multiple measures to exit kids. Could you be more specific as far as how that process works, when it's determined that a student is ready to exit RTI and able to perform a grade level? Is that just happening during meetings? Is that just during benchmark periods? And in those different measures, how are those used to determine a student's grade level proficient?
Yeah, so, best practice, just from a plan perspective, is that when you're listing an instrument or an assessment, you should also be listing some kind of exit criteria. However, because it's a multi-measures approach, no one is used in isolation. So, what may happen is, and it's in between benchmarks as well, so you don't want to wait. The, I would say, the thread throughout both RTI and AIS is it's just in time, right on the spot. If it's between benchmarks, that's absolutely fine. So, it is primarily done at the, I would say, at the teacher level, first and foremost, because that's the person who's most familiar with the performance of the student. However, because the teams meet on such a regular basis, and again, the frequency and duration differ by level, because at high school, it might be a little bit of a different approach. But the key pieces is that they are discussing students and what they're seeing, both in and out of the classroom, to determine, first and foremost, who's on the radar, why, what are the needs, what's being provided to the students, and what, if anything, needs to change. That only comes through conversation. So, it's really essential that, and some of those are informal, I, we talked a little bit, and this is where some of these processes overlap. CST is often used as a vehicle to identify needs that students have. So, in addition to the RTI meetings they may have, the data meetings that they have, there's lots of meetings. This is another vehicle where people are coming together and saying, "What do we notice with our students, and what do we need to do beyond what we're doing now?"
That makes sense.
Could come in various forms, but we don't want to wait until a benchmark. It's too late.
Okay, that's good to hear. When you talk about progress monitoring, are we using FastBridge to progress monitor students that are in RTI?
FastBridge is one of the tools. They're very short in duration, so the composition of FastBridge is there are subtests. They are designed to be short. So, with that, there's both a positive and a negative. The positive is, you're not spending a lot of time assessing. The negative is, you don't want to take a test that's one or two minutes in duration and make a mountain out of a molehill, right? So, it's essential that FastBridge has tools that are available to us at our disposal, but we have to use other things. So, again, teacher observation, running records, benchmark assessments from Teachers College. So, I'm just naming a few, but it's anything we have at our disposal that's painting a fuller picture of the student. And fortunately, because we have systems in place, there is facility in accessing this, what I'd like to see us do is more so bring those into one platform. So, right now, there is, there are a few databases that we have to consult, but we have WITS. So, we're lucky that ultimately, everything lands in one place. But they look at everything, and frankly, you know, any and every concern, whether it's small, or appears to be small at the time, could come into play later on as a bigger issue. So, we have advised that, while it may look minor, or you're not really sure, you're always erring on the side of the student, and on the side of caution, is really look at what it is that you have at your disposal. But it is designed to be fluid, because kids will enter and exit. Their facility with skills and strategies will differ, depending on what it is they're interacting with, as far as the curriculum, as far as their instructional program is concerned. So, what I meant about a life sentence before is, we can't say, "Well, you're in RTI Level Two, and that's where you'll stay all year long." That's a disservice to the student, so it has to be fluid.
I agree. Thank you. For, if parents are watching this, and they've made it this far.
Yes.
I know that I've seen my son's FastBridge scores, because I've just played on WITS and found them there. So, that's great that Williamsville communicates in that way. Do we communicate that to parents, that if they're interested in seeing their child's scores for those screeners, because all kids are screened fall winter-spring, that parents can access that?
Yes, they have access to it. What we did is an enhancement, because what became also clear is, you know, with subtests... What we did is an enhancement, because what became also clear is, you know, with subtests and what they're measuring, and how they're measured, and you see a number. And frankly, we live in the world where lots of data is coming across to us as families, as parents, and trying to interpret what each one means without an explanation. It's really difficult to do that. So we actually enhanced the parental part of WITS to include an explanation about that particular part of FastBridge and what it means, so that there's a context. So also with the notion of, do not panic if you see something reveal itself as a need. It's not a standalone. So I would invite at every turn, if there is ever a question, a clarifying piece that a parent may need, beyond what they've received, to please contact the school, the building principal, the classroom teacher, the specialists who are providing some of the services, any of the individuals can speak to additional information. But we enhanced on purpose, because we realized it's not intuitive. We, you know, we've just got a lot going on, so we just want to make sure it's clear to families. But that was enhanced about a couple, two or so years ago.
That was a good idea. I'm sorry to ask so many questions.
Oh, it's okay.
Last one, quick, is just.
No problem.
Know that we're doing what we need to do as far as RTI, and that it's necessary to use RTI K4 for reading. Has the district had any conversations or thinking about possibly applying RTI model for math?
Yes, we have. In fact, we looked at two other pieces. One is RTI for math, and one was also RTI at middle. Again, what we're finding, and I guess this is a great benefit, having both AIS and RTI, because there's a lot of overlap, we already have a lot of the making, so it really would be a very small leap, not even a leap, a, you know, step, I guess, if you will, to, yeah, hop, really to make, to make that be a logical next step. One of the things that I have asked Dr. McGinley and teachers, will be involved in this as well, to look at, which we did several years ago, is if we were to go down that road, what universal screening tool would we use for math? We actually did pilot FastBridge. There's a math component. There were positives to it, but what you want to do anytime you're looking at this is you want to see what else is out there. You don't want to just rely on what you're familiar with. So a few years back, there weren't as many quality tools as what we would like. If we're going to spend our time testing, it better be worth the time for the students, more so than anyone else. So we're going to really spend some time looking at, because RTI requires a universal screener as a first step, what that would look like. So we are already beginning that process, or I should say restarting the process, because we did begin.
Great, thank you so much.
Sure, no problem. Thank you.
Thank you again for all of your work in this presentation. We will now approve the academic intervention plan. Is there a motion to approve the academic intervention plan as presented? Director McClary, thank you. Mrs. Bieger, second. Is there any additional discussion? All in favor? Opposed, abstentions, motion carried unanimously. Just want to double check, it's 10 o'clock. I know we've got a few more updates. Are we in need of a, of a short recess? Does anyone need to use the bathrooms? We got, okay. So our next item is information on Mandarin Chinese. My, Dr. Mertzla, are you giving us information on Mandarin Chinese?
Yes.
Okay.
So there is a report about Mandarin Chinese. It details some of the class sizes that are going on across the district, and what has taken place so far in this new course. We did get a little bit of a late start, as you know, based on the fact that it was very difficult for us to find an appropriate certified teacher. But all anecdotal reports now is, are that it's going very well, and we look forward to seeing what the numbers look like for those students that want to continue the next level of Mandarin next year.
Thank you. Any questions or comments regarding Mandarin? Information on class size. Dr. Mertzla.
The Board, a couple of months ago, asked us, the leadership team, to come up with some information about class size, looking at some of the studies, and giving a summary of what those studies really are saying. That is the information that's found in your report. I'd like to thank Dr. Baylen for all of her research in this important area. And I think really the key here is not to say, is it right or is it wrong? It's to really convey the sense that there's mixed results to the class size research. And some of it depends on context. For example, in urban settings, if you decrease class size from 25 students to 15 students in a class, there are some significant positive effects to that. But when you look at districts like Williamsville, and what our district is like in terms of the students we serve, there are not a great deal of studies that indicate by reducing it by one or two, or even three or four students, really makes a large positive impact, either academically or from a social-emotional standpoint. Also, that information is there for you to review at your leisure, and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Just want to say, I appreciate all of this research. I need to go through it. I have not had the time to do that yet, but it's available as public content, so any parent that wishes to view any of this research will have the ability to do it. It's right here in Board Docs. Our Board Docs platform is very searchable and relatively easy to use. Okay. Any other questions regarding that? Thank you. Personnel, number 19. Is there a motion to approve the tenure recommendations for certified staff as presented? Mr. Lemay, thank you. Mr. Meyer, second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none? All in favor? Opposed, abstentions, motion carried unanimously. Congratulations to those individuals who are receiving tenure. District facilities and support services, number 20. Is there a motion to resolve to reject bids for contracts 100, 101, 102, and 103, and rebid contract 100 for the 2018 Music Capital Improvement Project as presented? Mr. Borstein, thank you. Is there a second? Mr. Maka, thank you. Any discussion? Thank you, Mr. Maturski, for all the details regarding that in the packet. Okay, all in favor? Opposed, abstentions, thank you. Motion carries unanimously. Music improvement, project bid recommendations. Is there a motion, please, to reserve, resolve to award and authorize bids for contracts for the 2018 Music Improvement Capital Project as presented? Mr. Borstein, thank you. Mrs. Vansys, second. Is there any discussion? Okay, seeing none? All in favor? Opposed, abstentions, motion carried unanimously. There are no items to discuss, first, item 21. Number 22, does anyone have a request or matter to discuss under Committee of the Whole? Thank you. 23, is there any correspondence anyone wishes to discuss? All right, we will now conduct a second public expression with the same rules outlined for our first public expression. Does anyone wish to speak? Thank you for joining us here until the end.
No, I was going to say, currently, there's no, no enlisted on the sheet, but if there are individuals who wanted to speak, the time is available.
Thank you. Is there a motion, please, to adjourn into executive session to finish up discussions related to employment matters and matters of current litigation? Mr. Lemay, thank you. Is there a second? Mr. Meyer, thank you. All in favor? Opposed, abstentions, motion carried unanimously. Is there a motion to return the regular board meeting to open session? Mr. Meyer, thank you. Mr. Lemay, second. All in favor? Opposed, abstentions, motion carried unanimously. Our next board meeting will be held on Tuesday, February 11, 2020, at 7:00 p.m. here at District Office. Would someone like to make a motion to adjourn the regular board meeting? Mr. Borstein?
Aye.
And Mrs. Vansys? All in favor? Opposed, abstentions. Good night, everyone.
Aye.